Sodowsky, who's the Executive Director of the Housing Authority.
Hello, can you hear me?
There.
Can you hear me?
Hold on just a second, he's gonna turn it up a little.
Go ahead Marty.
Try it now.
Thank you, Troy Martin Sodowsky, I'm the Executive Director of the Housing Authority. Thank you, I just, I want to start with just a statement. Our mission is to provide safety in the city's horrible housing individuals and families of lower income. We currently own or manage 500 or more units and our- Public Choice Voucher, our voucher program, we have anywhere from on a monthly basis between 500, 510 vouchers instead. We have three primary different types of units. The first one is the traditional public housing unit, which comprises about 177 units, about a third of our portfolio. The second, which is the singular largest piece, which consists of our project-based rental systems, that's 291 units, and that's about 51% of our portfolio. That's Roke Block, Barker Mill, and Auburn Esplanade. And that's our project-based rental systems, that subsidized housing that we have through contracts with the state of Maine. For those units. And then the last piece is our tax credit properties, which we have three. That's Vincent Square, 62th Spring Street, Marchers School, and that's 86 units, so that's about 15%. And then we have 10 market rate units, that's 2% of the portfolio. In- included with each building or each program type, our selection criteria for our use by staff to determine eligibility requirements for applicants. Within a category, they generally, you could say that within, say, the tax credit properties, they're similar, there may be some distinctions definitely, but, and likewise, within Esplanade, Roke, and Barker, they're, they are similar, but not, not uniform, let's say. And then public housing, we are governed by our administrative and continuum occupancy plan, which is, the acronym for that is APOP. And that, that gives us, we create that policy, it's reviewed by the board, and it needs to be in compliance with HUD, which we recently did an update to that policy, and the board approved it within the last couple of months. Again, select, selection criteria is not typical of what you would think in a market rate environment. We have lists, we pull from that list, we have to send out documents to those individuals, we need to give them a required time to respond, there's follow-up that we're required to do, and the documentation of that process that we need to maintain. Our catchment area is Auburn, Kinneck Falls, Mayan, New Gloucester, Turner, and Poland. So that's generally where we operate our programs through and from. And we typically serve individuals and families between, well, in the subsidized properties, between 30 and 50% of area median income, which right now, a single individual at 30% level would be earning about $17,300 a year. At the 50% level, they'd be earning about $28,850. I, I think that's, I think that's about it, unless there are more. We have, oh, I know, I just wanted to review waitlist. Our waitlist are generally between 200 to 400 persons per building, they, they are, but we generally have good waitlists.
Are there questions from the council?
Yes, Mr. Sodowsky, this is Steve Melks, Ward 3.
Yes?
Yes, so I'm just curious, how's the vacancy, what's your vacancy rate, and how do you, you know, what's the average, what's your current vacancy rate right now?
Our current, our occupancy rate is 94% right now.
So how many, how long are units, you know, how long are the units open, vacant? So you're 6% vacant right now?
That, that, that varies. In some of the buildings, you know, Barker, Barker Road, they're very old buildings, we have some residents that have been in there for many years, and when they, when they leave, whether they either go to some form of assisted living or they, they die, it, it's a, it's an opportunity to get in there and actually do things. So that might take a little bit longer, getting some materials and things like that. However, in a building like Spring Street, where it's relatively new, it virtually may need a cleaning and a painting, and that's it. The other thing is sometimes we run into issues with-
You know, clearing an apartment out of, of things because there might be legal matters, there might be something in probate, there, you know, we, there might be a, a claim that, you know, children are making, and it has a tendency sometimes to slow down the process because we, we don't really like to put the stuff right out on the street, you know, we do, we want people and families to be able to work through some of those issues. So, you know, on a good term, seven to 10 days, and sometimes it may be longer, but if it's longer, there's, there's a reason for it.
Other question, other questions, Council Platts?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you for that presentation. This is Adam Platts, City Council at Large. My question was with regard to the waitlist and units opening up and then becoming occupied again, are you seeing that your waitlist is growing year to year? Like what, what type of average are you seeing over one year, three year, five years? Is it flat, or is it, is it ping pong up and down, or are there any trends that you're seeing?
Um, I don't, I don't know that I'm really aware of trends. I think it stays pretty consistent at, at what it's at. Sometimes what ends up, what ends up happening is that you might go through a period of time where you're trying to fill a couple of units, and what we do is called a pull. So if you had two units to fill in a building, you might say, okay, well, I need to pull 30 applicants off the list. And in that process of working with them, you might find that 10, maybe 15 or so come back to you and say, thank you, I never removed myself from your list, but I have adequate housing. So that can actually have the impact of, of decreasing the size of a list. But, but my sense is from the flow of activity in the office and from discussion with staff, there's a good flow of people coming onto the list all the time.
Other questions from the council? Council Walker?
Yeah, this is Council Walker from Ward 5, New Auburn area. I, I have been talking with some of the people from Baccarat Arms, for instance, and I guess some of your other places as well, you've had to get security to come in to, to work with you, or work to protect your buildings, is that true or not true?
That's correct, we have hired a security firm. The firm does a roving throughout all of our properties, I believe it's probably from about nine o'clock at night until three in the morning. And we have a, a security person located at the central office, and who does address issues as they arise, as they arise during the day, if there are issues.
Can I ask what, what brought that up? Because I know for many years you didn't have security in them areas.
Um, you know, there were some threats made to the office, and, and generally, Councilor, you know, we suffer from the same ills of behavior of people in society, we're no different. And, you know, my view is, to the degree that security acts as a deterrent and acts as an ability to identify issues, some issues that might be reportable to the Auburn Police Department. I would assume, and I know from some feedback, that I think most residents feel very good about having that around, and, and sometimes for property managers and resident services coordinators and, and other housing staff who have to deal with some residents that, you know, may not be easy to deal with. So it's, it's helpful that they have that sort of support.
Other questions or comments from the council? Seeing none, we'll move on, thank you very much for your time tonight. Marty, we'll move on to the next item, which is the discussion of special events.
Thank you, thank you very much.
Thank you. Liz Allen, the Communications Director, will present on this. This is on the agenda, following up from the budget discussions with the council, wanting to have some time to talk about the mix of events we currently have, and whether going forward, we'd like to have a different, a different mix of events.
Jim, will you do the slides for us?
Please.
Magical hand. Does he ever talk back? Oh, here he comes.
He's logging in now.
That's magic. Start talking back to you guys. Well, hello. Not used to this format, I'm used to the big room, this is great. So, good evening, Mayor and Council, I am, as you all know, Liz Allen, you're Director of Communications and Community Engagement. With me this evening is Jennifer Bonick, she's our Downtown Coordinator. Jen and I are very pleased to be with you tonight, to spend a little time talking about events. So you had a great overview of everything about our department and everything that we do during our recent budget presentation. There was a lot coming at you from a lot of different places, so we're here this evening to really dive into events with you, and most importantly, get your feedback. A great place to start is with our three, I call them legendary, signature events. New Year's Auburn, the Auburn Lobster Festival, and the Auburn Blues and Brews Festival. I hope that each of you at some point has had a chance to attend at least one of these great events at some point recently. In addition to our signature events, there are also several smaller, yet very impactful community events that our team presents each year. These are, in addition to the signature events, they are also, in addition to all the wonderful programming that the Recreation Department brings to the community, we're not going to quantify those for you, it's too much for one presentation, but they do an amazing job. Some of these other events and programs are our charming shopping sheds that are in Anniversary Park, our Hilton Holiday Hangout, which is a shopping event for local crafters and artisans, the Auburn Story Walk, which is along the Riverwalk, it's an arts project, and National Night Out, which we partner with the Auburn Police Department to bring to the community every August, my personal favorite, I would say.
We also have other community events that we support, as you all know, like the Liberty Festival, which is coming up this week, the fireworks are at 9:30, that's usually the common question that we're asked, so fireworks are at 9:30, everyone. We support, as the city, we support those events with staff as well as funding. The Auburn Community Concert Band, the concert started last week. We also have our age-friendly group running the concession stand this year. Last week was, I think, a tremendous success, Councilor Walker could probably share a little more about that, but everyone enjoyed having the age-friendly folks there as well. And we have been building a really, really great reputation with our events, starting back in 2019, when the 150th Celebration kicked off, it was a year-long campaign. I can't take any credit for that personally, I wasn't here, but they started hosting larger events that year, and we've just been building on that. And really, these, the three signature events do have a tremendous impact on our downtown, not only bringing people together, but we're also getting dedicated support from folks like Emerson Toyota. Nick Elwell shared this statement, I won't read all of it to you, but they're really excited to be a part of the community, to support these events and bring people together in a positive way here in downtown Auburn.
Here's where I'm gonna brag a little bit. Through hard work, dedication, a lot of hours, and, and a lot of hard work by this team, and also by delivering on the promises that we've made, our signature events have enjoyed very real, very impressive success. These three events draw more than 10,000 people downtown throughout the year, which I think is quite an accomplishment. And the data shows that our crowds are, you'll hear a little bit more about this later, but that our crowds are a fascinating blend of people from all around, the majority of which, at least somewhere around 50%, maybe not the majority, but at least half, are coming from, these are local residents who are coming from here, or within Andrusgoggin County, and then there's visitors from outside our region as well, which is a nice blend. And each one of those people has a great time while they're here, they take back with them that positive experience and that good feeling about Auburn, and hopefully that brings them back here time and time again to see us, and maybe live here, and maybe work here, or start a business. So while they're here, these folks have a meaning, meaningful impact on our local businesses and our local economy.
And speaking of our local economy, these events do mean a tremendous amount to our small businesses here, one of which is located right here on Main Street. Mike Williams Jr., who owns Craft Brew Underground, has shared with us that really, New Year's Auburn, back when it was started in 2019, really saved, saved his business, and, and had, allowed him to keep moving forward. And as we've grown our signature events, he participates every year, and it really does help him get through some of those leaner times that all small businesses face.
So, we know you like data, you know, you like numbers here. So, let's dive into those numbers just a little bit. Each of our signature events offers something special, very special in my opinion, and each one is completely free to attend. The event usually, this particular event, which is Blues and Brews Festival, runs midday, noon, noon 30, till around 6:00 PM, so it wraps up fairly early. Each fall, the Auburn Blues and Brews Festival offers a laid-back, family-friendly festival atmosphere with incredible local blues music and bands, food trucks, local breweries, and folks on this one tend to bring their chairs and stay for the whole thing, which I personally love, they settle in to enjoy some of Maine's best blues music around. This event cost us about $28,000 to host with all expenses in.
And then the Auburn Lobster Festival, which we just had in May, everyone really loves this event, it started off as a joke, and we turned it into reality, and I know I, I saw a few of you at the event this year, it was, it was a good time. And same thing, like the Blues event, the Auburn Lobster Festival costs around $27,000, $28,000, give or take. And the Auburn Lobster Festival was also featured in Down East Maine Magazine in their May edition, which was also very exciting, so we, we garnered some additional press, and they reached out to us, so, so that was fun. That event usually runs from 1:00 to 6:00 PM, and this year, we also added a component where we had a partnership with the Lobster Institute, and Christina Cash, who's the Executive Director, she will be returning next year, and they do an educational component that the kids really seem to enjoy. I think the poor lobsters were really on their last legs by the end of the event, quite frankly, but the lobsters, I think, even had a good time.
The last and largest of our signature events is New Year's Auburn, another favorite. This one runs around 3:00 PM to 9:00 PM, it's definitely our latest, but we, we no longer go till midnight or 1:00 AM, we found that this is a much better time slot. It's, it's got a great reputation for live music, food trucks, we tend to get bigger, bigger music names, hopefully, and it's a ton of fun. To my knowledge, this is one of the last big New Year's events in the state of Maine, really, so I'm proud that that's here and that it's ours. This past year, we were able to add the most incredible component, and that was a drone show, a light show by drone, and it was the first in Maine also. Phil knows I like to be, I like us to be first at stuff, and that was one of the best parts. So that was an extra-large draw this year for folks, so, so that's New Year's Auburn. We also wanted to share some data to show who is attending our signature events, so we have this incredible software that collects cellphone data and tells us exactly who comes in, when they come in, you know, where they came from, which is really helpful to know where our marketing dollars are being spent and how impactful that is. So, so the cellphone data collected during the most recent Blues and Brews Festival, which would be last fall, showed that 55% of the folks who attended came in from Auburn and Lewiston, which is great, and then when you factor in all of Andrusgoggin County, that accounted for 65% of our crowd.
And the Lobster Festival was showing similar data. This year, the weather didn't cooperate with us as much as it did last year, so we had a slightly lower attendance this year than last, but still around 2,200 people, so I still consider that a success. We saw 44% of attendees that were from Auburn and Lewiston, and 56% of attendees from Andrusgoggin County. And then with New Year's Auburn, we again saw similar numbers, 52% of attendees from Auburn and Lewiston, and 60% from Andrusgoggin County. So again, we, we have built a really good reputation here regionally.
So we have what we're considering to be a new event this year, it's a familiar premise, but it's brand-new, it's a first-year event, and that would be the Lewiston Auburn Balloon Festival. So our, I mean, the city has obviously always been involved in supporting this group, this, the previous event, and making sure that it was here and, and supported as best we possibly could. We are sponsoring this new event at the $10,000 level, that comes through our budget, but it's allocated by, by you all. And we're also providing a lot of staff support. I'm really excited that there's a, an Auburn component, we're kind of bringing things back over to the side a little bit, which is really nice. We've come up with a creative idea, and that's for a classic car show, right on Main Street, we'll shut everything down, bring in cars from 1976 and older, that group's really excited to come. We're gonna have some food there, some great barbecue, we're gonna have a DJ spinning tunes from the 50s, 60s, 70s to go along with the cars and set the tone, and we'll have a very small beer garden with just local Auburn beer businesses. And actually, I think a dessert-type food truck this year, so that'll be fun. So while we are building on 29 years of balloon excellence in this community, this is a startup event, it's a heavy lift, the city of Lewiston is doing an incredible job planning and organizing, and I'm proud that we're gonna be a part of that. This is a great example of successful collaboration between the two cities, we are all on the same page, and it's really fun to be a part of. So thanks for your support of that one. So, we want to talk a little bit about the why, why Jen and I and our entire team do what we do. So the why is, one of the whys is the commitment to, Auburn's commitment to signature events grew out of the strategic plan, which was, we had great participation from the community on that, and a recurring theme was to bring more downtown and more things for people to do. So one of the final 11 recommendations from the plan was for the city to invest in arts, history, culture, recreation, and entertainment, so that's us. So I wanted to point out a few of the strategic plan goals that we're supporting in the work that we're doing with events. The growth and quality of life goal specifically called out some of these, these things that we're trying to live up to every single day, and that's to make the downtown a focal point for the city, for culture, arts, events, and entertainment, to establish a downtown coordinator position to program those events, to enhance and increase the number of events in Festival Plaza and on the Riverwalk. It's nice to be reminded of that goal, that's a quality of life goal. And then we had a ton of really small events that expended a lot of energy, and we decided to kind of funnel those into bigger, more impactful events, so one of those goals was to combine small events into larger events done really well. Couple other goals were recognizing and supporting existing and new entertainment opportunities by making them a funding priority, which you do when you fund that line in our budget, and enhancing current activities by making them experiences and developing a marketing plan to attract tourism. So that's that other 50% that come here from somewhere else, and building a great experience for everyone that comes downtown. So we truly believe and hope that you agree, that we've come a really long way toward achieving these strategic goals, something we should all be really proud of, and that's through our commitment to great events right here in downtown Auburn.
So we've heard from you that you would like some more family-friendly events, so we had a few ideas we thought we would throw out to you all to, to get some feedback on. One of those would be, am I using the P-word, the parade word? Santa's, Santa's motorcade. In essence, we would start in Festival Plaza, we would escort Santa with city vehicles down to Anniversary Park in New Auburn, and light trees in both locations, and, and work with Councilor Walker to support the New Auburn event, like we, similar to what we did last year, minus, we had a short escort last year, but, so something similar to that. Doing a, a larger parade in the winter, there's always safety challenges, and there's weather concerns, so we thought it would be probably manageable to go from Festival Plaza to New Auburn that way. And I believe they had done the reverse route in years past. And then we also spoke with the REC department, they have tremendous programming, and wanted to know if there was a way that we could collaborate with the Recreation Department to bring some of these events into downtown. Are there some events there that we could grow into a, a larger downtown event? And two of the events that were discussed amongst our team was the Spring Celebration and the Fright Fest, and potentially moving those into the downtown area, and, and see if we can get some more, more families to come out and participate in those events.
Without reinventing the wheel and coming up, coming up with a completely new event, but to build on something that's already really strong. So keeping all of that information in mind, along with the knowledge that our team also has other responsibilities beyond events, and that our budget for the upcoming year was reduced quite a bit, we really need to hear from you. This is, this is the time, so what are your City Council priorities for our downtown events? Do we continue to do what we're already doing and doing well, and make that budget work? Do we eliminate something to fund different things? This is the time to really hash it out and let us know where you're at and what you'd like to see happening downtown.
Thanks Liz and Jen, I just want to make sure I add too, I don't want to gloss over the family events that REC focuses on, I think, you know, they highlighted a couple about bringing downtown, but we also have, you know, the Auburn Pal Egg Hunt and Barbecue that REC coordinates, the Spring Celebration that Liz already mentioned, the Youth Fishing Derby that's done, these are just the spring and summer events currently that's booked. We coordinate the, the main backyard campout outreach, so if parents want to do a backyard campout, they come to Auburn REC and they provide all the camping kit that's necessary for that, so that families can do that. We do fa, fa, we do movies in the park, currently we have two scheduled for July and three scheduled in August for that event. And then, and then we have sim, probably similar, close to eight or so events that are scheduled for fall and winter as well. We help coordinate the, just like the Spring Fest, we do the Winter Fest, but then we also have, as Liz mentioned on this previous slide, was the, the Fright, Fright Night, but then also Auburn Pal hosts a, an additional Halloween-type event, as well as, I believe in the winter, they start, they host camping programming, so that other camps will come in and showcase camps that kids can go to, as well as our own summer, summer rec camp program, and so that's just to name a few, and I know they're, they're in the catalogs that the REC department puts out, but- puts out, but one thing that we do have is we track how many families or attendees participate in all of those events, and so we can certainly give you that number too. Just to expand on, these are some of the signature, some of the other ones that Liz mentioned, but there's, you know, probably close to 12 to 15 other family events that the REC program hosts and puts on for the community.
And on top of that, the police department has family-friendly events as well, which are not just National Night Out, but, you know, Skate with a Cop, and there's several other things they, what was it? Cocoa with a Cop. I mean, they're really offering some great, inclusive, fun, wholesome events for families in Auburn, so.
Liz, to put a little context around this discussion, since we're now moving into another budget year, but should we assume that the Blues and Brews is well in the planning stages and that's going to happen? I mean, that's not really on the table because of the sponsorship packages and all the arrangements that are being made for that. Is that a correct assumption?
Since the budget process and we felt potentially some changes coming, we have kind of put everything on hold. Jen has gone forward. We have some, we have not signed any contracts, not that I want you to pull the plug on this, but we've been really careful not to have to refund money or cancel on people. So we are in a holding pattern, which was why it was really important for us to get in front of you as soon as we could. So yes, it's mostly planned, but we've kept as much as we can up in the air without committing the city to big expenditures.
Questions from the council? Council Platts?
Thanks. Yeah, I guess my one question is with the cuts that we've already imposed on you guys, do you believe that's the death of an event, or is that 10% less music? Is it 10% less marketing? Is it, you know, you guys make those decisions within your department. Was it $10,000 less? I don't remember the...
It was about 50 less, I think.
50 less?
Yeah. 50,000.
Yes, I'm sorry.
No, it's okay.
Hold on, my manager might give a helpful, my recollection was that we cut at $20,000 in, on the expense side and expected a $10,000 increase in sponsorship on the revenue side. Is that correct?
So effectively a $30,000 bump. So where does that leave you guys?
So we also, because of the holding pattern, haven't been able to fundraise because we aren't quite sure what we're selling to our corporate partners, so we're kind of holding on that as well. So to bring the existing stuff to the table, you know, we can, we need to raise in corporate partnerships about 30,000. So we're pretty confident that based on our presenting sponsor and their interest and their happiness in what we've been able to deliver to them, I think that they're probably, not to speak for them, but they're probably most inclined to come back on, so that would cover quite a bit of that. So I think we feel pretty secure that we'll be able to bridge that gap, status quo. Adding other things in, you know, forces some tough decisions. Do we cut something to make room? Do we find another way to fundraise and deliver?
Other questions? Council Gary?
Thank you. I know you ladies work hard, and I know you does all it can, but, and I know, I'm trying to figure out how to tactfully say stuff. I understand the Blues Festival is mainly grownups because of the music and the drinking and the stuff. I mean, yes, kids can go, but it's more or less an adult, more friendly environment. The Fourth of July and the Balloon Festival, that's more or less usually a family event. I don't seem to think, and I've heard that from a lot of others within the community, there's not enough kid-friendly events and not enough ways for school and other booster clubs to be able to come in and set up and do something, something as simple as maybe even face painting or doing marginal fun stuff that I was able to do when I was a kid that as time goes on, has gone away. And I would like to see more of a move towards bringing, being able to bring the whole family in the downtown. Then on the other thing, I got to be totally honest, when the Good City Manager said that he was bringing in a downtown planner, I thought that meant he was hiring somebody like Glenn or Eric to bring more businesses. I didn't realize it was an event planner. And so parts of me, it's bittersweet. I like what you guys are doing, but it wasn't what my concept of a downtown planner was.
Counselor, which downtown are you talking about? When we talked about the downtown coordinator that the council approved, and we talked about the position, Jen's position? Because that was pretty open to the council on the decision to add that position.
I'm more, well, I might have blended it, but it doesn't seem like we're bringing more businesses downtown. We're not filling the void like when Austin used to be in the downtown, and we had other businesses. Don't get me wrong, the businesses we have, like Gritty's is bringing in people, but it's not bringing in enough to the downtown to make people want to come into the downtown. At least, that's what a lot of people that I've been listening to have been saying.
Yeah, I just want to make sure we're talking about the coordinator, not the position that was in the budget this year for the planning department with the new planning position.
No, this was before.
So downtown coordinator is the position we're referring to, and that's the one that Jen was brought in for.
Other questions? Council Walker?
Thank you. Thank you very much. I want to talk about the Santa Parade itself. I disagree with you with only using the city one truck or two trucks, one fire truck or one cop car. I can go back, we'll say five years ago, when we had Public, he's at Public Works now, but he was down at the Parks and Recreation Department. Back when he put the parade together, we had somewhere around 40 different people that were involved in this parade. We cut that out when we started doing all this big stuff that cost us the kind of money it costs now. Back then, we never got costs broken down, so we didn't know what parades like that was costing us because nobody ever did that. But in any case, that is one, in my opinion, that is for the city of Auburn. That brings out 90% of the people that is the city of Auburn, not just anybody coming in that wants to come in, because I think Santa Claus brings out the people that live in our city. And I think a parade is more than just a fire truck or a police car or two other vehicles that might stretch out, I don't know, 200 feet. The other thing is Jeremy and myself, that's the one I was trying to think of his name, we worked on putting one together that New Auburn organized. Now, I know that I felt good that year because I talked with a lot of the people that participated in Jeremy's parade. And my parade was 65 different people involved. 90% of them were some type of a float, truck, car, trailer, wagon, four-wheeler, but we had 90% of them, it cost me exactly this to put that parade together. So I'm hoping that you're not going to come up with a price that's going to cost us $25,000 to put a Christmas parade together. The other thing, the Auburn Business Association always raised money to help put the parade together, not just to decorate the downtown. Lately, most of their money's been going to decorate the downtown. In our budget a few years back, we always made sure the recreation department and the Parks Department had a Christmas time budget to help pay for a parade that was going to go on. Somehow, that got eliminated, and it came to where we are today. Escorting Santa Claus, I would like it better to go through New Auburn, come to your place because your place is down here. Santa gets off and does his thing. I've had no problem with that over the years, and our Santa Claus is in New Auburn, doesn't have any effect on your Santa Claus whatsoever. It goes by, and then our Santa Claus arrives 15 minutes later. So that doesn't cause any harm whatsoever to the public or anybody, but you've got 200, 300 people in New Auburn standing out there waiting for the parade that's organized on South River Road, and it ends up over there disbanding in a lot that belongs to Mr. Platts. So that's pretty much what I have to say about our Santa Claus parade. I think that the other thing is we should be volunteer to work with the vets. That's a parade that's whittled away over the years, that seems like not too many cities are looking to keep it going, but I believe Auburn should be putting a budget together, and we should try to get a couple of our schools together. We should look out to National Guard. We should be helping to put that parade together and not have it just make a loop around this corner and go back to the other side of the bridge. There has to be more involvement, and of course, I guess that's your job to put that together if it's given to you. But that's what I'm looking at for the two parades, and I believe there could be even another one thrown in the middle of the summer.
Other questions or comments from the council? Council Platts?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Question in regards to LA Balloon Festival. It's great to see some great planning and some great things that are happening on this side of the river. Is that going to be the whole entire weekend, or is that just one specific day?
The Lewiston side will be all weekend long. The Auburn event will just be on Saturday.
Okay.
Yep, like probably noon to 5:00, so it wraps up in time for the 6 o'clock launch.
Okay.
Yep.
Thank you.
And there will be a parade for that event, too. I don't think I mentioned that.
Great, thank you. I would like to see kind of more, if we can find something to do Friday. I know it's a lot more work for you guys, but something Friday and something Sunday for citizens on this side of the river to kind of keep them engaged and something to do as well.
And I don't dismiss that in the least, but this year, we have like just over a month left to plan, and we inherited something that, you know, everybody's scrambling to do. So I think next year will be a game changer on both sides of the river. It's going to be full-crepesc. It's going to be great.
Thank you. I've been in your shoes and feel, you know, in the planning for the festival, so I totally understand, so there's always room for improvement next year.
It's going to be amazing.
Some comments for other events. I totally agree with Council Walker about something for our veterans, a veterans parade. I've heard from other counselors and other citizens that there used to be a Winter Fest kind of event. I would love to see something like that come back and try to have. I've never experienced it, but it used to be a pretty big event back in the city, so I'd love to see something like that come back.
Winter Fest was great. It was a lot of partnerships with, you know, Andrusgoggin Land Trust and some of those other really cool community partners that blew that up. So yeah, we'll talk to REC about that one, for sure.
Council Mills?
Yeah, are we doing the Christmas Village again? Is that going on?
We're planning to, yeah. That was why we suggested the parade end there, because we did a really great Christmas in the park.
Right, so I'm in favor, you know, if we have to eliminate something else to increase our young people involvement, kids, especially for the Christmas. If, whatever, you know, I'm not a parade guy, so I don't really know how to put parades together and all that, but I'm in favor of, I know my kids did it a long time ago, and it went through Lewiston and over into Auburn, and they were singing, and it was great. And it was a big one, and I think around Christmas time, that's important. And I agree with Counselor Gary that if we have to eliminate, you know, another drinking festival that's targeted towards adults, I think adults have plenty to do. And there's not enough focus on children and kids in our community, so that would be my feedback on that.
Thank you.
Other feedback questions? Council Cal?
Just a follow-up from Council Walker's comments. Do you have any information? Probably not at your fingertips, but of the cost of a parade? I have no idea what that would, you know, the logistics or other aspects that would be involved?
So we started, I think, when some of this started changing. It's all about risk management, and so the liability, there was a presentation that was done through a municipal association who we have insurance through, and that's where some of the discussions was landing regarding some of those costs. It's not, as Counselor Walker said, putting a parade together and, you know, yes, it involves a few things that have to require, that's required now with parades, is you have to have hardened barricades in your parade route, you have to have good lighting, security, all these things for us to be insured on that. So we'll work up the cost. We have, we did the main state parade, right? So that's obviously a much larger event, but when you take a look at where the parade actually went through in Auburn, we're talking about the same amount of roads that have to be hardened, barricaded, barricaded, to make sure that we get the liability insurance that we need for that. So those are things that we'll work through, and the group is talking about doing it now. It is different if it's a municipal apparatuses as opposed to having someone bring a, you know, a truck or a four-wheeler or trailer. Now, some of this is requiring inspections. It's requiring, if you recall, there was an incident that took place with a John Deere tractor in Bangor, I think it was, quite a few years ago. So that, all those things started shifting as to what can you do regarding parades? And so it's a bit more administrative lift. Not saying that you can't do it, there's parades that are happening all the time. It might limit what types of apparatus are in those parades. Also, who's participating? Can it be a walking parade rather than floats? Because all those floats need to be inspected. And so those are things that we have to work on and verify that they all are insured so that they're not riders on our policy, and so all that has to happen. And then when you're talking about a nonprofit organization, sometimes that becomes too much of a barrier for them to participate. So we can work through all that. I think that there's, it's important to explore it, and we'll continue looking at what's required, what's not required, and we'll circle back with MMA as it pertains to our liability insurance.
Mr. Mayor? And one other, were we talking about the Memorial Day Parade? Are we, is that for the veterans? Is that what we're talking about?
I was assuming that a number of us attended the event in Lewiston, and I know there was a conversation that day, I think Council Whitey was there, Council Wise and Council Walker, about there was no parade. So I think when he comes back, we can ask him, but I think that's what he was referring to.
So the organizers actually stopped doing the parade because it was just a terrible turnout, and so people were not coming out. It was just people walking down the street that were participating in the parade, and you had a handful pockets here and there of some people that actually come out to it. And that's another challenge with some of these events. We can want to do a lot of things, but then what is the community response for those events and activities?
That's certainly changed over time.
Yeah, and I think as a city, though, we're offering at least minimum monthly a family event in the community that's open to our citizens. So that is, we're hitting that every year, and a lot of that is through the REC department. What changed a few years ago? We've kept that, but then we added these signature events. The signature events are what we really need to make sure, are you solid on these events so that we can begin marketing, getting sponsors? Because without the sponsors, you're not budgeting enough to cover these costs. So we have to bring the sponsors in to make sure we're hitting that. But, so really, those family events, we're going to continue hitting those. And elements that we can bring into the events, like we did with the lobster tank to make it a little more of a, hey, kids, come, there's this activity, we'll continue looking at, including those, into those signature events. Because, you know, even the Blues and Brews, that's a, if you look, there are families that are coming to that event. Just because alcohol is being served doesn't mean that, you know, families aren't coming. And so, but we can look to incorporate other activities at those events to ensure that. And I think, you know, as Liz said, National Night Out is probably our largest signature event that is focused 100% on the kids in the community, so.
And if I can, I'll add that I'm working on a flyer for the National Parks and REC Month is the month of July. I'm a little behind, it was due today, but I'll get it done tomorrow. But the list of family-friendly events that the recreation department has put together just for the month of July is absolutely staggering. It's incredible. They're doing such a good job.
So I guess, go ahead, Council Cal.
I guess one question I also had was related, we have three big signature events that you've highlighted. My recollection is part of the questions that we weren't sure of when we were looking at the budget, what's the impact if we said do two and not three on your ability to raise funds from sponsorships?
It's severely decreased because they're getting less, you know, less of what we can deliver. So we adjust accordingly. We change the price points, maybe, if they're getting less, or, you know, if we're adding in family-friendly stuff, then... in family-friendly stuff, then we seek out different sponsor levels for those and we kind of adjust and pivot and make, do our best to raise it. It does hinder what we could offer and the corporate partners really look for those bigger opportunities, but there's...
And do you anticipate it would hinder the number of corporate sponsors that agree to join?
Probably. But I think it's kind of exponential, right? I mean, we'd have fewer big-ticket donors and maybe more smaller amounts that we could attract, so I would hope to equal that out.
So for the council, it might be helpful for the staff if you could prioritize these three signature events. As they've heard the feedback and they start putting together alternative plans, I think it would be helpful for them to know what might be getting cut. Because I don't think we're in a situation where we're going to deliver the three that we have now with the budget cut that we made and add more things on. So is there any feedback from the council about prioritizing the three events? Counsel Platt.
Yeah, I guess just to give you guys something to walk out of this room with, you know, guidance from the council. I fully support the direction that it seems we're heading with from an events perspective as a recovering event planner. I know that it's really hard to turn the ship right now. I also think that when you commit to new events, you should commit for three years. So if Leroy's talking about parades, it's not something you commit to for a year, it's something you commit to for a period of time so you can see if it works. So in that vein, I support Auburn going ahead as planned with the previous events and plan for next summer or this Christmas or whenever, you know, we think it's time to start migrating into maybe a new type of event. So that would be my personal opinion. That said, in ranking these signature events, I do think that the Blues Fest is probably the easiest one to drop. I only say that because I think it's probably the easiest one to privatize. I think you could find someone else to possibly do that. A local business, Craft Brew Underground, Gritty, you know, who knows? But the other ones, I don't know if you're going to find a private entity to keep that alive. I think Blues and Brews, you possibly could.
The beauty of that is that it was privately run before there was, it existed, it was the Riverwalk Blues and Brews Festival before we kind of helped grow it and really expand it. So we've revitalized that and given it a real good reputation, so.
Counsel Cal.
I too would support you continuing with those three if that seems feasible. Given the time, the turnaround, the amount of work you've already put in and give you more time to really think thoughtfully through about a transition to some parades. It's, I'm encouraged by the idea of your proposal of bringing, perhaps bringing some of the kid-friendly, family-friendly events that are run by the Rec Department downtown. You know, I just wonder if we have those and promoting those in a slightly different way, perhaps that will, could help. So I would support that moving forward as proposed here.
Okay.
Other questions or comments from the council about prioritization? Counsel Wyman.
I agree with both counselors. I would like to see, moving forward, these three events to move forward, but we start looking after we get through on some of the new events that we would like to see for next year and where you guys have more time to plan once getting through some of these events.
So perhaps a little bit of clarification. I think you're going to run out of runway if we're not careful here, right? Because we have the money that's budgeted from July 1st this year to June 30th the next year. Those three events are in there. And if what we're saying is, hey, next year, let's have those three events and see what we can do in the summer, you've run out of runway. All the money's going to go to those three events because as we saw already with the budget cut that was made, there's an expectation that the staff's going to have to make that up and additional sponsorships. So I understand Counsel Platt's prioritization, but it, I think we're a little far down the road with expectations about the upcoming festival this year. I mean, if we cancel the Blues and Brews this fall, we're not having anything till New Year's. So I would pose the question about the Lobster Festival. From a logistical standpoint and a budget standpoint, that seems, if you're going to cut one, the easiest one to cut because it's the furthest one out and as I understand it, there's no sponsorship commitments for that at this point and it would give the staff more flexibility about what we would be doing. When we talk about going into next year, we're talking about, you know, this time next year in the summer.
So I'd love to weigh in on that because we have structured our sponsorships so that they cover the fiscal year of all three events. So it actually does work out well, so we kind of covered ourselves through the Lobster Festival. So we don't do a sponsorship through the calendar year. So anyone that signs on now gets the next three events. So we would be okay for, through the spring, but that leaves the summer, so.
Yeah, so from what I heard from the council, certainly I think there's a desire to have more family-friendly events. So I posed the question to the council, for this coming year, is your thought that you would maintain these three and have the staff attempt to bring, especially in the fall and the spring, more kid activities to that event and then work on the next year? Or is your intention to have some more strictly focused, family-friendly events? And the thought would be we're going to have to give up one of the three we have now to work within the budget that we have? So thoughts the council might have in that? Counsel Mills.
Yeah, so I appreciate that we're looking at the strategic plan. I haven't been on the steering committee and I do appreciate that. We were in a very different world in 2019 and the budget was in a different situation in 2019. And so what I would like to see is if the Lobster Festival and the Blues Festival was a really viable and a way that people could make money, if we can, how much we can privatize that? So how much we can offload our control costs? Obviously, we have to do some logistical support with police and whatever else, but privatize that as much as possible and focus on the big one, which is the New Year's. I think that's been very successful. But take that money and allocate that money going forward towards things that are not going to get privatized. I don't think we're going to get a company come in, and maybe we will, but that's going to want to sponsor the, you know, Santa Claus parade. That's not, that's probably not a big-ticket item for a company, but I'd like to see us, you know, prioritize those two events, privatize those two events and focus that city money. Because if it's really good events, somebody will step up and get the benefit of it. And focus that, the city money on the kids and our local people here in Auburn, in New Auburn. So that's my take. That's my feel, that's my thoughts. And our budget's very different now.
Oh, yeah.
I mean, we're looking at more cuts next year, so. And that's the reality.
Could you tell me what privatization looks like? I don't, I guess I get that. So we no longer host it and somebody else steps in?
Yeah, I mean, I'm not maybe going to ask the event planner to kick his thoughts in, but instead of the city funding it, somebody else funds it. And they market it and they, and we say, hey, you can use our facility. We'll give you, you know, whatever the costs of the, because I'm looking up there and fire and police, that wasn't the biggest cost. It was funding bands, it was some of the other stuff. And say, somebody else do it. Because then if they're going to get the promo for it, if it's really good for, you know, promoting that, then the local businesses will do it. And if not, then in our budget world, the way we're, you know, what we're looking at is we're looking at cutting, you know, we're looking at cutting, serious cutting next year. And so this is services.
Counsel Walker.
So that's my two cents.
I go to quite a few events that are in different places, but I expect to pay something. I don't understand why we run all these events. We have to put bracelets on people, we have to check them out because they're coming into where there's a booze tent or something that, and I'm not talking about charging a kid or someone that's under 16. I'm talking about adults that are coming in to be part of our, you know, Raising Hell that Night and drinking and partying and coming here, especially people from out of town. There aren't too many people that can go to any event that isn't in Auburn for sure that they can go without paying something. I would think we were, we're going to give you a bracelet, you're going to be charged five bucks a head. And I think that would bring in...
It's 11 grand. That's 2,200 people, so 11 grand. So maybe we test, I love that idea.
Other comments from the council? Counsel Cal.
Thanks, Mr. Mayor. I think that's where I was going with recommending that we stay with the three is somewhat along the lines, what Counsel Mills was saying is that it's not necessarily, it wasn't the privatizing, but the sense I got was that we would have a better chance of getting a larger amount of money from sponsorships with three, continuing three signature events than with two. And so I think it's along those lines of if that's giving you a greater ability to bring in private support, even if you're, even if this year we're maintaining a little bit more of the logistical aspect and support of it, perhaps down the, you know, moving towards it being more of a public-private partnership or becoming more privatized. But I think that, I'm concerned about just saying, let's do two and then pull in a whole bunch of additional family-friendly events when we do have many. Perhaps we have a better, there's opportunities for making people more aware of those. I just, that to me is, there's, the sense I've gotten from you, and please correct me if I'm incorrect there, is if we say do two, you would have a harder time bringing in that same amount of money. So I don't know where that balance is and it sounds to me like having three, at least for this year, giving you time to think about creative solutions or additions, like charging a small amount to subsidize.
Mr. Mayor, your comment?
Sorry, final comment, the, yes, I would agree that if we had to, if you did choose to, needing to cancel one and the Lobster Fest seemed to be the best because of the timing, there was a good presence I saw of families and you had the Lobster Institute there. So, you know, so it's, we're then removing one that potentially already is achieving what we're trying to get to, so.
Counsel Mills.
I'd add, so what does privatization look like? Craft Brew Underground, Lost Valley, Baxter Brewing, they do the work to bring the Brew Fest, not you. You do something else. So you say, if you guys want to do this, we'll provide the fire department, whatnot, but you go promote it, you go find the sponsors, you guys do the work or else it's, the value is, and we'll allow you to charge five bucks a head, that's 11 grand, that's the 30 grand we cut. But you guys go find the sponsors or else if they don't want to do that, if Mr. Whoever from the Craft Brew Underground, if it's, if he doesn't want to do that, then...
That doesn't happen.
I think that, I got a couple areas, but, you know, one, we, we're asking them to come to our events most of the time. These aren't, and we're trying to make them events that they're willing to commit their staff to and be part of because they're getting pulled in a lot of areas too, right? I mean, we just completed, you know, an event and there's other events that are taking place across the river that, you know, they're getting pulled in a lot of different directions. I don't know if we have, you know, we're not cornering the market on this. This isn't something where people are like, hey, we want to get into your event. For the most part, this team is saying, look, we're seeing good numbers, here's our numbers, here's our touchpoints that we're seeing. We're really promoting and selling this and trying to get them to come so that way there, there'll be some opportunities when people come to make it a successful event. We're, you know, we don't necessarily need to be in the event business. And so, but I think that there, when we go back to the purpose of these events, there were, you know, probably three, you know, three real key areas for these events. One, to make sure that we had opportunities for people in our community to be able to come out and attend something without having to travel to another, another community for this. New Year's Eve, good example. Those were really stopping a lot of areas. Many were going to Portland years ago and now here is an opportunity to be able to showcase Auburn was that other attraction, right? We want to put these events on so that we're bringing people in that are not necessarily part of Auburn, but they're coming in, they are going to our restaurants, filling up the hotels and bringing that economic driver into our, into our community. So that was one of our reasons as well. So we collect that data. We check with the hotels, what's their occupancy rate, what's that looking like for them? And they're sold out when we have some of these events we're bringing, especially New Year's Eve. You know, those are times when they probably wouldn't have had that. So there's that economic driver that these events are also having. But then as was shared, probably about 40% on average of our three signature events, we're bringing some people in from outside Andrusgog County that are coming in and maybe seeing Auburn for the first time. And so that's part of the purpose of those. But if the intent is, you know, I don't know if we necessarily want to be that event coordinator, we can pivot and do some other things, really work internally on the family components. I think when we start talking about charging, now you're talking about a different market and you better really have something for them to want to pay. And, you know, five dollars a head is not a big deal, but I can tell you, there's been some others, if you look at the Harvest Event over in Lewiston, some of those, some of those had really good results and the Beer Garden is just coming back now after it wasn't as great of a turnout in the past. And so, because some of those, they do require you to pay, you know, pay when you enter. And so, so it's really a fine balance, but we're good. I mean, I think we'll, we'll do the, you know, some of this research. I think the mayor's spot on with, you know, maybe it's the, if we're going to drop one and we'll run some of this and we'll talk to some of our consistent sponsors and say, look, if we can do this and maybe add to that menu a little bit on what we provide them and do this with two events, what does that look like? Because as a community, when you look at the calendar, there aren't many months where we're not providing something here in Auburn. And whether it's the signature event, whether it's the Bloom Festival, Liberty Fest, you know, tree lighting, every month we're basically hitting something. Obviously, those winter months, we, you know, around that March, you know, we do the, we do the Winter Fest, that's a good turnout. The Winter Fest used to be Auburn-run and then we did exactly what's being talked about here. It was, how do you privatize that, right? So it was partnering with some of the other sponsors and saying, let's get them to do some of this and they did. It's at Lost Valley, we do things at Norway Savings Bank Arena. So we really pushed it out into those other areas. So we did shift and pivot that. So I think we're good, we can shift and we can, the team can make that work. We'll work on the numbers and I'll also get you some of the attendance numbers for the other family events that Rec provides. But I think we have what we need and we'll work on really connecting with our sponsors. That's what's key.
So following up to the manager's comments, just make sure the council's in agreement with this. I think what we're asking staff to do is look at the three events we're providing and can we add components to that within the budget we have that's more family-friendly? And at the same time, potentially see what would be involved if we have the parade at Christmas time going one way or the other, whichever way we end up deciding to go between the Anniversary Park and Festival Plaza. Is that, is council in agreement? Is that what we want them to look at and come back to us with some updates on that?
Yeah, I think we have the realistic conversation with our sponsors and say, the budget's what it is and we can't go to our, we can't go to our citizens and ask them to pay for a concert when we're cutting services, when we're asking the school to consider closing a school, but we can put a concert. It's, we have to be, we have to make sure that we're doing everything we can to say, hey, this is a good thing, it's a good thing for the city. As the sponsors, we're, you know, we're asking everybody to step up a little more perhaps, maybe to fill that gap and be honest with them.
And there are sponsors that I think will be excited to hear we're adding some more family-friendly components to our existing events. I think they really, you know, respond to that.
I think you should ask Emerson to bring one other... I think you should ask Emerson to bring one other Toyota pickup down here and let the kids drive it around Festival Plaza as a monster truck.
Perfect, I can get behind that one. That's an easy sell. Yeah, don't tell him.
Any other questions or comments from the council on this, on this side agenda item?
Thanks, guys.
No, thank you very much.
Thank you so much.
So the next item's an executive session pursuant to Title I MRSA, Section 405-6A for personnel matter. Is there a motion to go into executive session?
So moved.
Second?
I have a motion and a second. All those in favor? Opposed? Will be in executive session.
To the public, the community room directly across the hall staff has the meeting streaming in there. If you'd like to sit down, you can go across the hall, you'll be able to see what's going on here in the meeting room. And when we have public comment, you can just come across the hall and come to the podium. So if you prefer to sit down and not stand, please go across the hall. We'll call the July 1st, 2024 City Council Meeting to Order. Please join us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the Constitution of the United States of America. And peace, harmony, love, for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I would note that our student representative, Representative Eggy, is unable to join us tonight. I'd ask the councilors to introduce themselves, starting with Councilor Gary.
Good evening, I'm Belinda Gary, I'm City Councilor at Large.
Rick Whiting, Ward 1, City Councilor.
Good evening, Tim Cowan, City Council for Ward 2.
Steve Milks, City Council, Ward 3.
Jeff Harmon, Mayor.
Good evening, Ben Weisner, City Council, Ward 4.
Lee Roy Walker, Council, Ward 5.
Adam Platts, Councilor at Large.
Phil Crowell, City Manager.
Thank you. The first item is consent items or no consent items tonight. We'll move to the second item on the agenda minutes. Is there a motion to approve the minute?
Motion to approve.
Second?
Moved by Council Walker, seconded by Council Cowan. Are there any errors or corrections from the council? Not seeing any, the vote will be by show of hands, all in favor. Opposed? Seven having voted in the affirmative and none in the negative, the motion is adopted. Item number three on the agenda, communications, presentations, and recognitions. There are none tonight, so we'll move on to Agenda Item 4, which is the first open session of the evening. Any member of the public is invited to speak to the council about any issue regarding city business that's not on tonight's agenda. If you would like to speak, please approach the podium, provide your name and address, and try to limit your comments to three minutes.
Just to speak about 121 mill?
This, ma'am, this is for items that are not on tonight's agenda, so the Mill Street item will be coming up later on the agenda. Not seeing any, we'll close the open session. The next agenda item is unfinished business. There is no unfinished business on the agenda tonight. We'll move on to new business. I would point out that the next six agenda items are closely related. They're all related to the Lake Auburn Watershed Overlay District and the issues regarding phosphorus control and septic systems. To facilitate public comment tonight, we'll proceed in this way. We'll call each agenda item, and I would ask the public to limit their comments on Agenda Item 1 and 2 to those particular topics. When we get to Agenda Item 3, that is the bulk of the items regarding the septic systems and is closely related to the maps on Item 4, the map on Item 5, and the resolve on Item 6. If you are making comments, when we get to 3, the council will consider your public comments on all three of those items. Item, excuse me, four items, Agenda Item 3, 4, 5, and 6. I would also say to the members of the public that are here tonight to speak, given the large number of people that are here, we'll be limiting comments, public comment, to three minutes. So the first item under new business is Ordinance 11-0701, 2024. As the City Council initiated text amendment to Chapter 60, Article 13, Division 2, Phosphorus Control. The proposed amendments pertain to septic system installation, maintenance, and replacements and new development. This amendment is pursuant to Chapter 60, Article 17, Division 2, Amendment to the Zoning Ordinances or Zoning Map. This will be a first reading. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Second.
It's been moved by Council Whiting to adopt as written and seconded by Council Walker. We'll now open public comment. Is there any member of the public that would like to speak pertaining to this particular agenda item? Please approach the podium, provide your name and address, and limit your comments to three minutes. Not seeing any, we will close public comment on this item. Discussion by the council, Council Whiting.
Mr. Mayor, I would like to amend the Ordinance 11-0701, 2024 that you previously noted to follow changes that were made by the Planning Board. Number 1, in the definition of acceptable increase, change .5 to .08. Number 2, in the definition of future area to be developed, change 1,180 to 435. And number 3, in the definition of per acre phosphorus allocation, change .047 to .020.
Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Council Cowan. Discussion by the council on the amendment. Not seeing any, the vote on the amendment would be by show of hands, all in favor. Opposed? Seven having voted in the affirmative and none in the negative, the motion is adopted. We'll return to the main motion. Further discussion by the council. Seeing none, the vote on the main motion will be by show of hands. All those in favor? Opposed? Seven having voted in the affirmative and none in the negative, the motion is adopted. Move on to Agenda Item Number 2. This is Ordinance 12-0701, 2024. City Council initiated text amendment to Chapter 60, Article 4, Division 3, Low Density Country Residential District. The proposed amendments pertain to septic system installation, maintenance, replacements, and new development. This amendment is pursuant to Chapter 60, Article 17, Division 2, Amendment to the Zoning Ordinance or Zoning Map. This will be a first reading. Is there a motion?
Motion to move.
Been moved by Council Walker to adopt as written. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Council Weisner. We'll open public comment. If there's any member of the public that would like to address the council on this item, please approach the podium, provide your name and address, and limit your comments to three minutes. Not seeing any, we'll close public comment. Discussion by the council. Not seeing any, the vote will be by show of hands, all in favor? Opposed? Seven having voted in the affirmative and none in the negative, the motion is adopted. We'll move on to Item 3. This is Ordinance 13-0701, 2024. City Council initiated text amendment to Chapter 60, Article 12, Division 4, Lake Auburn Watershed Overlay District. The proposed amendments pertain, excuse me, pertain to septic system installation, maintenance, and replacements and new development. This amendment is pursuant to Chapter 60, Article 17, Division 2, Amendment to the Zoning Ordinance or Zoning Map. This will be a first reading. Is there a motion?
Motion to move. Second.
Moved by Council Walker to adopt as written and seconded by Council Platts. We'll open public comment on this item. If there's any member of the public that would like to address the council on this item, please approach the podium, provide your name and address, and limit your comments to three minutes.
My name is Jay Bishop, 901 Lake Shore Drive. I'm gonna start off by saying I've been to quite a few meetings already. I've been to some of the Planning Board meetings. I've been listening to the workshops in reference to all this septic stuff. I'm gonna start off by saying, yeah, we need to protect that lake, there's no doubt about it. Even though I live in the watershed, and I don't drink that water, it's a vital resource for two towns, and it needs to be protected. But with that being said, I truly don't believe I should be forced into paying for things when I don't drink the water. In reference to the ordinances and places that you've changed for septic designs, not much anybody can really do about that. It's already been taken care of. It's gonna help the situation, and I understand that. As a homeowner, I think anybody here that has a home understands, when you buy a home, whether you're in the watershed or not, you have responsibilities that you have to take with that home. And whether it's a furnace, a well, a septic system, a roof, a driveway, all of that comes with that home, and when you need to replace it, it's gonna come out of your pocket. And I understand that. And if I get into a position where I am, in the watershed, where my septic needs to be replaced, I'll have to take on that responsibility. But I also know that, you know, with this whole testing thing that's out on the table, that's something that's being pushed onto these people that have bought these homes, and there was no talk about that when we bought these homes. I didn't buy that home because it's in the watershed. I bought that home because I wanted to get out in the country. I don't believe that a homeowner should be responsible for paying for those inspections. Law PAC is one of the organizations that would like to see that. And we all know the reason they want to see that is because there's a lot of data out there that they don't have. And this will give them a chance to get that data, on how detrimental it is with these septic systems that are in the watershed. Are they really causing a lot of damage? Are they causing a little damage? We all know they're gonna be causing a little, because it's just the way it is. Septic systems are septic systems. They're designed to, you know, eliminate phosphorus and all that, but you'll never get rid of all of that. On top of that, the enforcement stuff that I've seen along the way talked about in some of these meetings. It talks about when it's time to replace things, that, you know, there's opportunity for people at low income to help them out. Well, I'm 59 years old, and I'm trying to get ready to retire myself, but I also know a large amount of people in that watershed that are already there, and they're living on a fixed income. They're probably gonna have a lot better opportunity if they're in that position, and I may not, just because of what I make. I personally think when it comes to loans and all that, it should not be limited to people with special incomes and all that. In a roundabout way, it is kind of discrimination. If you're gonna offer low income, low interest loans across the board, you're probably gonna have a much better response for those that are trying to straighten out the problems. So again, I appreciate everything that you guys are doing. You're the ones that I get to talk to that make the decisions. The other people that I talk to with the Planning Board and all that, they're the ones that are working on this. I appreciate every one of you, including you, Eric. I know we've had a few fallouts here and there, but it's never been major, and we're good. You know, but I mean, in general, it's a good thing, and for many reasons. The lake should be protected, but the expense should not be at the homeowner's expense in reference to testing. I know there's been some other options thrown on the table. I worked, watched the workshop last Monday. I appreciate the fact you took the time to get some data together in reference to funding and all that. You know, there's ratepayers, there's two cities that could combine money together to try to help this situation on the testing part. The rest of it, it is what it is. I own a home, and I'll take care of it if I have to. Thanks for your time.
Thank you. Is there anyone else that would like to address the council on this item?
Stephen B. O., 575 Johnson Road. When this ordinance was originally enacted with great revisions in December, it was recognized at the time that there were some parts of it that needed to be revisited because it was done with a lot of good intent, but it had some structural failures to it, and there was a resolve to do an additional review and to bring the matter back before the Planning Board first, and then the council. That has now been accomplished. There's been a lot of work put into this ordinance effort with a group of people who has some real, not only physical presence of ownership, residence in the watershed, but a lot of expertise in the groups that were put together to work on it. I was on one of those groups. This ordinance has been through 15 drafts before we came to the matter that's being presented to you tonight. Ideally, there would be no development in the watershed and no additional phosphorus inflow. That's not realistic in the city of Auburn, given the present zoning and the structure of the land and the ownership. What is greatly relevant, however, is what this ordinance can do to reduce the flow of phosphorus and the increase in potential algae blooms and other limiting factors in the lake. There was some discussion at the workshop last week about the relatively low amount of actual septic discharge into the lake. And there was, this chart has been referred to by various people on several occasions, which was purveyed by Water Resource Systems, which did a study for the city, and it shows a very low level of septic load going to the lake. Actually, it should show zero, because according to the report, there is zero point source infiltration directly into the lake. There are no straight pipes into Lake Auburn. However, the very last item on that chart shows a huge watershed load, as it's described, of 430 kilograms a year of phosphorus to the lake. That's from the soil in the watershed. That's largely from old failed or failing septic systems. There's a small amount that's natural phosphorus that occurs in the soil. Another small amount that is attributable to agriculture, but there's little agriculture in the watershed now. Most of that load that's coming into the lake is from leaching in from the soil itself. Now, the first thing we've got to do is to get an inventory of those systems, which ones are failing or failed, and then address how to remedy them. There are a number of different remedies with new systems. But that's the thrust of the ordinance, is to get this entire enterprise underway, find out where the real problems lie, and then take steps to address and correct those failed systems in order to protect the quality of the lake for all of the thousands and thousands of people who are ratepayers, and also frankly, to protect the property values of those who are not ratepayers, but who own properties in this area. Thank you very much.
Any other member of the public that would like to address the council on this item?
My name is Annette Loser, and I live in Auburn on Elm Street. And I was just wondering about the Central Maine Community College. Do they have a big system? You know, they're right next to the water. And also, there's a, when you go down into the college, it has a big trailer park right next to it. And do they have systems like that, you know? I mean, you can't just think about new things, you gotta think about the old existing buildings and stuff. And that community college has been there for a while, and right up next to the water. I don't know. I just thought I'd point it out.
Any other member of the public that would like to address the council on this item? If not, we'll close the public comment. In response to the question raised by the public regarding the community college and the trailer park, both the community college and the trailer park are on sewer. There is some small area of the watershed, mostly to the southeast side of the lake, that's serviced by sewer, and those entities, you know, houses, commercial structures that aren't, will be inspected. Any other discussion by the council on this item? Seeing none, the vote will be by roll call. The clerk will call the roll.
Councilor Cowan?
Yes.
Councilor Milks?
Yes.
Councilor Weisner?
Yes.
Councilor Walker?
Yes.
Councilor Platts?
Yes.
Councilor Gary?
Yes.
Councilor Whiting?
Yes.
Seven having voted in the affirmative, none in the negative, the motion is adopted. We'll move on to Item 4, Ordinance 14-0701, 2024. Consider adopting the Lake Auburn Watershed Overlay District Septic System Inspection Map. This map will be referred to in Chapter 60, Article 12, Division 4, Lake Auburn Watershed Overlay District, and will be considered in accordance with Chapter 60, Article 17, Division 2, Amendment to the Zoning Ordinances or Zoning Map. This will be a first reading. Is there a motion?
Motion to move. Second.
Moved by Council Walker to adopt as written and seconded by Council Whiting. Is there any member of the public that would like to address the council on this item? If so, please approach the podium, provide your name and address. If so, please approach the podium, provide your name and address. Seeing none, we'll close public comment. Is there discussion by the council?
Mr. Mayor?
Counselor Cowan.
I move to amend this ordinance 14-07-01, 2024, for the Lake Auburn Watershed Overlay District Septic Inspection Map, to incorporate the recommendations from the planning board, specifically to remove the location dots for the septic sites that were on the map, and to replace the dates on the map legend with labels, year one, year two, year three, and so forth.
Is there a second?
Second.
Been moved by Counselor Cowan, seconded by Counselor Gary. Any discussion by the council? Not seeing any, the vote on the amendment will be by show of hands. All in favor? Opposed? Seven having voted in the affirmative and none in the negative. The amendment is adopted. We'll return to the main motion. Is there further discussion by the council? Not seeing any? Not seeing any, the vote will be by roll call. The clerk will call the roll.
Counselor Milks?
Yes.
Counselor Weisner?
Yes.
Counselor Walker?
Yes.
Counselor Platts?
Yes.
Counselor Gary?
Yes.
Counselor Whiting?
Yes.
Counselor Cowan?
Yes.
Seven having voted in the affirmative and none in the negative. The motion is adopted. We'll move on to item number five on a new business, ordinance 15-07-01, 2024. Consider adopting the official Lake Auburn Overlay District 400-foot setback to Lake, Stream, and Brook for Subsurface Wastewater Fields Map. This map will be referenced in Chapter 60, Article 12, Division 4, Lake Auburn Watershed Overlay District, and will be considered in accordance with Chapter 60, Article 17, Division 2, Amendment to the Zoning Ordinance or Zoning Map. This is a first reading. Is there a motion?
Motion to move.
Second.
Moved by Counselor Walker to adopt as written and seconded by Counselor Whiting. We'll open public comment. If any member of the public would like to address the council on this issue, please approach the podium and provide your name and address. Not seeing any, we'll close public comment. Is there further discussion by the council? Seeing none, the vote will be by roll call. The clerk will call the roll.
Counselor Weisner?
Yes.
Counselor Walker?
Yes.
Counselor Platts?
Yes.
Counselor Gary?
Yes.
Counselor Whiting?
Yes.
Counselor Cowan?
Yes.
Counselor Milks?
Yep.
Seven having voted in the affirmative and none in the negative. The motion is adopted. The next item is item number six. It's a resolve. 6-07-01, 2024. Resolve calling on the Lake Auburn Watershed Protection Commission to fund subsurface wastewater treatment systems inspections in the Lake Auburn watershed. Is there a motion?
Motion to move.
Been moved by Counselor Walker to adopt as written. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Counselor Cowan. We'll open up public comment on this item. Any member of the public that would like to address the council, please approach the podium and provide your name and address. Not seeing any, we'll close public comment. Is there discussion by the council? Counsel Whiting?
Just a comment. As Mr. Bishop pointed out, and as other members of the ward I represent, I think this is important to convey that people who live in the watershed shouldn't be required to pay for the inspections, and we encourage, strongly encourage, the Auburn Water District and the Lewiston Water Division in conjunction with LOPAC to, I'm sorry, yeah, LOPAC, to get the acronyms confused sometimes, to cooperate to make that happen.
Other comments or questions by the council? I would just report that the Auburn Water District's last, excuse me, Auburn Water District Board of Trustees' last meeting during the open session, the trustees talked about the forthcoming resolve and this ongoing issue, and was amenable to placing item to provide the funding on their July agenda, should they receive a request by the Lake Auburn Water Protection Commission for such funds. Mr. Billidoo, a member of the Board of Trustees and also sits on LOPAC, was contacting LOPAC, so I would assume that this will be on the agenda later this month for the trustees. Any other comments or questions by the council on this item? The vote will be by show of hands. All in favor? Opposed? Seven having voted in the affirmative and none in the negative. The resolve is adopted. We'll move on to item seven on a new business, ordinance 16-07-01, 024. City Council initiated a zoning text amendment to Chapter 60, Division 2, Site Plan Review pursuant to Chapter 60, Article 17, Division 2, Amendment to the Zoning Ordinance or Zoning Map. This is a first reading. Remind the council that this is an item that we workshopped a couple months ago, has been to the planning board, and this was the change in the process to remove the 60-day presumptive approval. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Counselor Gary to adopt as written and seconded by Counselor Whiting. Public comment on this item will now be opened. Any member of the public that would like to address the council, please approach the podium and provide your name and address. Not seeing any, we'll close public comment. Is there discussion by the council? Not seeing any, the vote will be by roll call. The clerk will call the roll.
Counselor Walker?
Yes.
Counselor Platts?
Yes.
Counselor Gary?
Yes.
Counselor Whiting?
Yes.
Counselor Cowan?
Yes.
Counselor Milks?
Yes.
Counselor Weisner?
Yes.
Seven having voted in the affirmative and none in the negative. The motion is adopted. We'll move on to item number eight, ordinance 17-07-01, 2024. Considering a zoning map amendment to convert city assessors' parcel IDs 201-034 and 209-035 with addresses of 526 and 550 Minut Avenue from T-4.2B Traditional Neighborhood Development Zoning District to General Business 2 Zoning District. The city council introduced this proposal in accordance with Chapter 60, Article 17, Division 2, Amendment to the Zoning Ordinance or Zoning Map. This will be a first reading. As reminded to the council, these are the parcels, one of which the current central fire station sits on, and the adjoining parcel owned by the city. There was a favorable recommendation from the planning board to rezone this to facilitate the new public safety building. Is there a motion?
Motion to approve.
Moved by Counselor Walker to adopt as written. Is there a second? Second was Counsel Platts. Seconded by Counselor Platts. We'll open up public comment on this item. Any member of the public that would like to comment on this, please approach the podium and provide your name and address. Not seeing any, we'll close public comment. Is there discussion by the council? Not seeing any, the vote will be by roll call. The clerk will call the roll.
Counselor Platts?
Yes.
Counselor Gary?
Yes.
Counselor Whiting?
Yes.
Counselor Cowan?
Yes.
Counselor Milks?
Yes.
Counselor Weisner?
Yes.
Counselor Walker?
Yes.
Seven having voted in the affirmative and none in the negative. The motion is adopted. We'll move on to item nine on a new business, order 87-07-01, 2024. Allocating $70,000 in American Rescue Plan Act funds for Auburn housing study. I'll remind the council from the previous workshop, this is a request from the Ad Hoc Committee on Housing to engage a consultant to help them complete their study of the housing needs through 2030 in Auburn. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Moved by Counselor Gary to adopt as written. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Counselor Cowan. We'll open up public discussion, excuse me, public comment on this item. If any member of the public would like to address the council, please approach the podium and provide your name and address. Seeing none, we'll close public comment. Is there discussion by the council? Seeing none, the vote will be by show of hands. All those in favor? Opposed? Six having voted in the affirmative and one in the negative. The motion is adopted. We'll move on to item 10 on a new business, order 88-07-01, 2024. Allocating $40,000 in American, excuse me, American Rescue, American Rescue Plan Act, if the acronym is spelled wrong here, funds for food insecurity. This is from the discussion at the workshop. This is $40,000 as complimentary funding to the Grab and Go, to the previously allocated CBDG funds, and $5,000 for the potato program. Is there a motion?
Motion to move.
Moved by Counselor Walker to adopt as written. Is there a second?
I'll second it.
Seconded by Counselor Gary. We'll open up public comment on this item. Any member of the public that would like to address the council, please approach the podium, provide your name and address. Not seeing any, we'll close public comment. Discussion by the council. Counselor Gary?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. From what I understand, this money is to continue the outside sourcing of the Grab and Go food delivery program as we currently exist. Is that right? As well as the $5,000 towards the potatoes from PAL Farms that he kindly sells to the city to give out to those in need?
Yeah, my understanding is it's $5,000 for the potato program and $35,000 for Grab and Go, which is, will complement the $35,000 that was reallocated in June by the council in CBDG funds to Grab and Go. And the manager, I think, can speak to this, but there's currently a process to see if they can identify, city administration can identify, an outside group such as a nonprofit to manage the Grab and Go program. Mr. Manager?
That's correct, Mayor. So the goal will be to try to find a collaborative partner to continue this program. The funding is here. If we need to continue providing that in-house staff, that'll continue as well. But the goal really here is to bring on a partnership with an entity that's already providing food distribution within the city of Auburn.
May I have a follow-up question?
Certainly.
Okay, with that said, we're trying to put out, we put out an RFP for request of people, a proposal from any nonprofit organization to pick up the program that the PAL is currently running. With that said, how much money is there going to be for the PAL Center in order to be able to keep up with the snacks and the meals and whatever food that they have on-site to give the families when they come in and need?
This is the funding that, the exact budget that was funded before, still running that program. PAL was not running the Grab and Food Program. It was just at that facility, in that building. And so, the REC program since COVID started was the entity that was operating and coordinating the Grab and Go program. PAL will still receive the funding that's brought through that in the air budget. So this was the, this was the dollar amount that was determined that ran this program that will continue moving forward at that same dollar amount.
And for further clarification, my understanding is that the food of various types that's being provided at the PAL Center for the youth in the youth programs is not affected by this RFP or this allocation?
That's correct.
That's going to continue on, correct?
That's correct.
Okay, with that said, how much monies do they have in order to fulfill the need of providing the snacks, the meals, and anything else that they've been doing in the past, pre-COVID, after COVID, and during the Grab and Go?
So, I think that, Mr. Manager, you can try to ascertain this from the budget and provide that offline to Counselor Gary, because I don't believe we have that information available here tonight. Is that correct?
We do not. And I just want to make sure I'm not overpromising anything here, too. So the way that the program was being run was that a lot of it determines on what's available at Good Shepherd. When that food source comes in, it's also, how many students are we providing resources to at that time, based on our numbers? So it's not, I'm not, I'm not going to be able to give you a solid number. I just want to be clear on that. I can tell you that we served X amount of kids through, through a year. I can provide you that information. But a lot of times, it depends on what's coming in from Good Shepherd. How much can we pull out from that? Where are the current needs? Because there are times when it's not just the students, but it's also the families at the PAL Center that receive. If there's, if there's, Good Shepherd has, those who are to work within, within Good Shepherd know that there's times when there might be a larger allocation of milk that comes in or other produce that comes in. Depending on what that, how that comes in and what's available determines whether or not, oh, we have that extra now to put into some baskets, boxes for some PAL families. And so, it really does vary. The goal here is that the entity that brings this in knows that we'll have this additional need, and we will make sure that we're pulling those funds out to meet the current needs of the students, as well as any family needs that come up through that program that we're made aware of.
Respectfully, I know they get some stuff free from whatever sources they can have at hand. I also know that they get a certain, certain stuff from the Good Shepherd. But then, on the other hand, there are some stuff that they have to pay so much per pound in order to fulfill their needs so that the bags that they put together are well-rounded.
That's correct.
I'm looking out for these families, that they're not suddenly going to be dropped. And if we do have an agency, they've got to be able to provide this home service that the current PAL has been doing, because there's a lot of people that don't have access to these food pantries or the transportation, or the ability to walk at home or take it home. So I'm trying to prepare for those that are really in need.
As was shared in the workshop, the budget that's being allocated continues the existing program for this upcoming year with no changes in the programming.
But there's got to be somewhere, somehow, a dollar amount that you know in the budget in the PAL Center in their last year or so that they need, so that they know how much of a budget that they have per month in order to know what they can go and get.
So... Mayor, I feel I've answered. I don't have that number. We do not break out each allocation from the sources that we bring the funding in. We just provide the services that we have with the supplies that we have. That funding allocates that. There is a portion in this budget that does, will provide for the provider to deliver these baskets to, to the different, I think we have over 250 recipients. Some of that funding is to provide that service as well, but I believe that we, I feel like I've answered this. I'm not sure how much more I can give you.
So I think Counselor Gary, perhaps, the question here is, if we go to an outside provider, there'll need to be coordination between this provider and the provision of the food to the youth programs at the PAL Center. And I would point out, Mr. Manager, that is a concern, and I'm assuming that the city administration can take that concern away from this meeting, and when trying to identify a vendor, will make sure that the coordination continues in a manner that we've had in the past.
Absolutely.
Any other, Counselor Gary? Any other questions or comments from the council on this item? Seeing none, the vote will be by show of hands. All in favor? Opposed? Seven having voted in the affirmative and none in the negative. The motion is adopted. We'll move on to item 11, order 89-07-01, 2024. Repurposing 121 Mill Street as a community resource center. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Moved by Counselor Gary to adopt as written.
Second.
Seconded by Counselor Cowan. If there's any member of the public that would like to speak to the council on this item, please approach the podium, provide your name and address.
Emily? Can she?
Can she?
My name's Kathleen Light, I live at one-forty-three Mill Street. She's going to be handing out some information that I have, that I want the public to also hear, and, but I also want you guys on the board to read also. First of all, I'm going to start with, I have a letter here from Auburn Housing Authority, the summer newsletter, two thousand twenty-three, states, just wanted to start by passing along a safety notice to you. There is increasingly activity, activity at our properties of unauthorized persons loitering or attempting to make contact or to attempt to enter our buildings. That's one of them, same, two thousand twenty-three newsletter. With weather getting nicer and nights so warmer, we are seeing more activity from homeless and transits. I would like this to be in the minds of our residents, as I have observed some activity around our properties. A group of, a couple of things I have observed are asking residents for money or cigarettes. There has also been some drug activities, please be sure not to leave valuables in your vehicles. Merrill Security. Our security staff are working closely with Auburn Housing Authority to provide roving, security patrols, and report any findings in, in effort to provide a safety, more secure environment for our tenants. So with saying that, I'm a recovering addict, thirty-eight years addict. I'm a recovering addict twelve years now. So two years into my recovery, I said it was time, so I started doing the River Walk, walking the River Walk. I'm a spiritual guide for the homeless, some of you guys know me here. So I've been working with them for a long time, I love my homeless people. I mean, I'd be a critic to stand here saying that I'm not against this, but I am against it for being right next to one-forty-three Mill Street, Barker Mills Arms, because we have a lot of elderly there, okay? We've had a lot of break-ins, the vehicles, tents, Mr. Leroy Walker, I've dealt with him, calling him about the property next door that you own, with tents there, trash, they leave trash everywhere. They, they destroyed some of your property, breaking the bricks and all that. So I've dealt with a few of you talking on the phone as well. So I'm against it being there, because two thousand twenty, I called, I, I had it because of all the trash that was on the, the River Walk, the tents, you all know that. With the more activity of the heroin use and all that, it was just getting more out of control. So I seen a pile of feces, and that did it for me. So I went to Lieutenant Benjamin Quinell, which is a great guy. I said, what can I do, what can I do to change this, what can I do? So I said, how about if every time I see a tent, and I'm sorry for the homeless that I'm saying this, but I love you guys, but what can I do? So he said, every time you see a tent, give us a call, and we'll go there and tell them they're going to leave.
Thank you, thank you, Ms. Light, your, your time is up.
No, so-
Ma'am.
With this-
Ma'am.
You just didn't want me to speak about this.
Your, the council will be happy to look at what you sent out, your time has expired. Is there other members of the public that would like to address the council on this item?
Dan Campell, two ninety-four Hotel Road. I love you guys. I just want to say thank you to the city council and the mayor for putting a great committee together to look into this, taking a serious look at putting a community service center together for all sorts of people, not just the homeless. I just want to throw a lot of statistics so people understand when we're looking at community resource center. Eighty percent of all homelessness coming, coming up and existing is our elderly. It's not the drug addicts. I just want to again, thank you for everything that you're doing, and you're trying to do, and you're making the right steps. And everybody knows what my next step, what I want. We'll talk about that at another time, so thank you for everything you're doing.
My name is Greg Whitney, I'm the president of the Drop-In Center, formerly known as the Pleasant Street Drop-In Center. I'm handing out a fact sheet on the services we, we provide and the successes we've had. Please report that on June first, we had our ten-thousandth visit from homeless people, unhoused people, I should say. And as you'll see on the, on the report there, out of those ten thousand visits, we've had to call nine-one-one a handful of times, the majority are because of medical, medical emergencies. Homeless people are not dangerous, homeless people are just, just people, just like you and me. They've fallen on hard times, but they're, they're not dangerous. I found it interesting what the first speaker had to say. I know if I was homeless, I would do the same thing, I would find a vacant building, and that's where I would hang out. If the one-twenty-one Mill Street property comes to fruition, it will no longer be a vacant building, and I will be shocked if anybody tries to pitch a tent outside of that, because it's, it's going to be people there all the time. The unhoused issue is becoming larger and larger every day, not just in Auburn, not just in Lewiston, Auburn, not just in Maine, but throughout the state and throughout the country. Today, the majority of people who are trying to work and provide services to the unhoused are either nonprofits or members of the faith-based community. Locally, we have Trinity, we have City Mission, we have the Drop-In Center, Cadence Kitchen, the Root Cellar, entities like that. The problem is too big for just nonprofits and the faith-based community to, to solve the problem. It's going to take support from all levels of government, including, including local government. This project is a, is an excellent, I was going to say first step, but really it's a second step, as far as I'm concerned, for the, for the city of Auburn to really step up to the plate and, and provide services and help the, the unhoused community. The first step was, we did receive ten thousand dollars in upper funds at the end of last year to, to help with food insecurity. Right now, we are providing more than three hundred meals per week. A lot of that food is donated, but a lot of it is paid with the upper funds, so, so we thank you for that. You're going to be hearing more about our services from some other people who are here tonight, some other, other volunteers, and maybe even some, some guests of the Drop-In Center. So my final words are, I just encourage you to, to approve and support this project, because it's going to be a great thing, I think it's going to be a great thing for not just city government, but for the city and for the unhoused community, thank you.
My name is Peter Floyd, I am the vice president of operations of the Drop-In Center. I'm also on the community ad hoc committee with Council Cowan and Council Gary. I do have a letter to read, there's something, though, that I want to say before I do that, and that is that there's a lot of conversation about this being about homeless people, but you have it right on your agenda. It is a community resource center. We have just as many people who are housing insecure and food insecure, don't have money to buy clothes, because we, we have an open, free clothing closet, and they can get other items. You need to keep that in mind. This isn't just about a portion of the community that we clearly, most of the time, do not want to see. Right? They're invisible. We don't want them to be invisible, but please understand that the work of the Drop-In is much larger than our two communities, three hundred or so homeless people. Please understand that. I have here a letter of support from the Reverend Jody Hayashida. She is now an organizer, multi-faith justice worker for Maine People's Alliance in support of the Drop-In Center, so I'm going to read that for you. Dear council members, I'm writing to ask that you support the Pleasant Street Drop-In Center's proposal to share the soon-to-be rehab space at one-twenty-one Mill Street. The Drop-In Center provides life-saving services to some of our most vulnerable neighbors. It offers protection from the elements, increased food security, essential survival equipment such as tents, sleeping bags, socks, and more. Its numbers alone are indicative of how critical a resource it is. More than twenty thousand meals served since the opening in two thousand twenty-two. One thousand tarps, six hundred sleeping bags distributed, and the only facility in Lewiston or Auburn to offer free showers to community members. The Drop-In is clearly filling a gap in the way we are collectively able to meet the survival needs of our unhoused neighbors in the short term. And in the longer term, the center's commitment connecting people to resources, resources such as case managers, harm reduction specialists, and the housing navigator offers support for folks who are looking for a path forward. In addition to the concrete assistance for our unhoused neighbors that the Drop-In offers, it's worth lifting up the deep love volunteers and leaders bring to the work. Not every organization is rooted in a true belief that every person that walks through the doors is sacred and worthy of being treated with deep care and respect. But as humans, we all need spaces where we are met with that kind of care. And each one of you would be met with that same care. The Drop-In is grounded in such an ethic, and the beloved community that is formed as a result is healing and sustaining in a different, but also necessary way. Please support-
Thank, thank you very much.
Mayor Harmon and Council, my name is Lynn Ward, I live in Auburn, Maine, at two thousand four Hotel Road. I'm a volunteer at the Drop-In Center, and I'm also a lawyer for low-income individuals in Maine at a nonprofit. The things I say today are my own and have nothing to do with my employer. According to Maine Equal Justice, in two thousand twenty-three, more eviction actions were filed in Maine courts than at any other time in Maine history. It was a sixteen percent increase over two thousand twenty-two. That is incredibly overwhelming. Most of those cases were for non-payment of rent. Housing costs throughout the pandemic soared. It was not uncommon at all for folks that I worked with and for me myself to see my clients presented with forty-five days' written notice that their rent was going up thirty, fifty, seventy percent. Costs were on landlords as well, I understand that, but we're talking about folks that have very little room to adapt to a dramatic shift in their budget on such short notice. According to the National Low Income Coalition, housing coalition, twenty-three percent of Maine renters make thirty percent or less of the area median income. That's what's considered to be extremely low income. Sixty-three percent of extremely low-income renters are severely cost-burdened, which means they pay over fifty percent of their household income to rent every month. As of two thousand twenty-two, Maine was short seventeen thousand, seven hundred and seventy-two units that would be affordable and available to those extremely low-income renters. This is a crisis that has been building over time, and to Mr. Floyd's point, we're in a situation where the bricks are crumbling. There's nowhere to go from here but to put more bricks into place and to give support to the members of our community who need it. This is a community resource center, and that's what we need. I can't tell you how many clients in the twelve years that I've been doing low-income work that I have seen who are one bill to ruin. Maybe it's only two hundred dollars. If you look at even the general, the general assistance regulations, you'll see that a single person on social security does not qualify for assistance through general assistance. We need a safety net somewhere. This is a really great opportunity to bring together people who care about our entire community, the unhoused and those who are unstably housed, to provide supports before people end up down that rabbit hole of ruin. What we need is a central location that when people are struggling with food insecurity, when they are struggling with how they're going to pay for a car repair, when they're trying to figure out, where can I live, because there's no place available to me, there's a one-stop shop available where they can be given the information they need to succeed. I know that our city wants our citizens to succeed, and I am hopeful that you will pass this, because we need it, our neighbors need it. Thank you very much.
My name is Bets Mallett, and I am also a vice president of the board at the Drop-In Center, as well as a resident of Auburn at two fifty-four South Main Street. For the sake of time, I only have a few points to add, and also for the sake of time, I'm going to read those points to avoid any unnecessary tangents. First, I'd like to quickly address the need for the Drop-In Center's use of the Mill Street space specifically. It would be impossible to tell what is essentially a tragic tale of our tenuous relationship with our current landlords in just a few minutes. So I'll simply say that we are currently operating in an environment that makes our already challenging work unnecessarily more difficult and threatens our ability to serve Auburn folks in need. Indeed, it is only because of the extraordinary dedication of our volunteers that we have been able to navigate the tremendous amount of obstacles that have been put in our way and to ultimately survive in our current location for as long as we have. With certainty, our days are numbered there, and the use of the Mill Street space is absolutely essential for our continued success operating in and serving the community of Auburn. Secondly, I'd like to take a minute to lift up the part of our mission statement that our first vice president already mentioned, and that is that it includes serving not only those facing homelessness, but also those in need. This was a very intentional decision made by Drop-In leaders who felt it was vital to be fully inclusive when it comes to the people we serve. What this means is that we not only serve unhoused members of this community, but we also serve housed Auburn residents who are, in many cases, rent-paying, tax-paying, voting citizens, who for a variety of reasons are struggling to make ends meet. Many of our guests at the center are elderly residents or individuals with disabilities, veterans, the working poor, and residents who have recently fallen on hard times due to circumstances beyond their control. The reality is, there are many people in Auburn who are in need of the resources the Drop-In Center has to offer. These people, housed or unhoused, are our neighbors. Neighbors who can't afford things that many of us often take for granted, basic necessities like clothing, toiletries, household and emergency supplies, or even a hot meal. Neighbors who may need help acquiring assistance from the providers that work with the Drop-In Center on Wednesdays, and support connecting them with services that help them thrive in our community. The Drop-In Center is the only resource of its kind in Auburn. It's a unique place for, where anyone in need is welcome and treated with compassion and respect while getting services that profoundly impact their well-being. In turn, this improves the well-being of the broader community of Auburn. Our neighbors need the center, and the center needs this space. By approving the Drop-In Center's use of one-twenty-one Mill Street, you are allowing us to continue serving Auburn community members, both housed and unhoused, who need our help. As someone who lives in Auburn, not far from the Mill Street location, I would be incredibly grateful-
Thank you very much.
Good evening, my name is Jennifer Ugly, I live at thirty Barton Avenue. I'm here to voice my support for the city council's proposed plan of creating a resource, community resource center at one-twenty-one Mill Street, which would include space for the Drop-In Center. My connection to this particular project is that I am a volunteer at the Drop-In Center. I started a year and a half ago after seeing the tents out on the church lawn. My first thought was, wow, here's people using what they have to help others, I want to be a part of that. And I never left. During the summers, my seven- and ten-year-old boys volunteer with me. During the summers, my seven- and 10-year-old boys volunteer with me. I wanted them to experience from a young age that we're called to love our neighbors and that we have all kinds of neighbors here in LA and that they're all valuable and worthy of love and care. I've seen firsthand the immense value that the Drop-In Center adds to our city. There are so many individuals here in Auburn who see their unhoused neighbors and want to help but don't know how. And the Drop-In Center has been the connection to give their compassion and generosity a place to work. In addition to practical donations of clothing, shoes, toiletry, and other items, people have donated their time, enabling the Drop-In Center to be entirely volunteer-run for more than two years straight. That has been possible because the people of LA care about each other and see the value in the Drop-In Center as a way to take care of each other. But it's not just individuals being connected. Local agencies like Lewiston Housing, Spurwink, Disability Rights Maine, and Well Health Partners and others set up tables at the Drop-In Center on Wednesdays to meet with clients and help them move forward in their pursuit of housing, healthcare, and financial stability. Nursing students from the Maine College of Health Professions come several times a year to conduct foot care clinics. Even restaurants like Da Vinci's have partnered with us to do what they do best, great Italian food, to provide meals for guests. Over the last year and a half, I've watched the Drop-In Center very efficiently use funding from donations and grants to keep our doors open to anyone in need. They've also networked with other local agencies like the Seventh Day Adventist Food Pantry, Trinity Jubilee Center, Operation New Matter, and others to share this work and ensure people in need aren't falling through the cracks. But people are falling through the cracks. In its current location, the Drop-In Center can only be open two mornings per week. I can only imagine what it could do with a home base that could operate every day of the week, not to mention how many volunteer hours could be saved by not having to pack up everything and put it away every time we're closed. I'm glad that other residents with concerns about security and the surrounding neighborhood have come to speak tonight, too. I think their concerns are valid and need to be taken into consideration if this plan moves forward. I'm very aware that the issues leading to homelessness are systemic and complicated and won't be changed overnight. In the meantime, though, the Drop-In Center is helping people survive and hopefully thrive until those changes happen. In conclusion, as a new Auburn resident, taxpayer, and ward five voter, I'm fully in support of this project.
Hi, my name is Nicole Rush. I am on the board of the Drop-In Center, at-large member. I just have a letter to read from a...
Could you provide your address, please?
I'm from the Drop-In Center in Auburn, on the board.
Yes, could you provide your home address, please?
My home address? I live in Durham. But I just have a letter from an Auburn resident that couldn't make it, if that's okay, if I just read that. "The volunteers at the Drop-In Center have such big hearts and love for the unhoused community, and the work they do each week is amazing. My husband and I have become friends with a lot of the unhoused community, and we see and hear firsthand how much the work they do at this center has literally saved lives. The center has partnered with my husband and I in providing us meals every week to personally deliver to those who cannot physically make it to the center. The people who receive the food on the streets and at other places in Auburn are so incredibly grateful. The work that the Drop-In Center does has been one of the most beautiful and powerful acts of love. But the Drop-In Center to move to this new building would be a huge blessing to the unhoused community. We know they would be committed, faithful stewards, and continue and maybe expand their mission to feed and love the people." Jeff and Dottie Bernier.
Hello, I'm Julia Kimball. I am the homeless response coordinator for Andrus Goggin County, and I'm a resident in Randolph. I was asked today to come and give some statistics around the support of the Community Resource Center. Since September, 265 people in households who are literally homeless have entered the homeless response system in Andrus Goggin County. 64 of them have become inactive and disengaged and have not reached success in housing. This is the largest barrier currently to successful housing. It is not mental health, it is not substance use. Currently, in Lewiston, Auburn, specifically in Auburn, there is a lack of ability to engage with people. There is not a adequate space for even for Monday through Friday. Wednesday, I am unable to host meetings with providers due to them prioritizing the importance of meeting with people at the Drop-In Center. The Community Resource Center, though, would also be a great space for Preble Street as well as Immigrant Resource Center of Maine and all the other partnerships that City of Auburn is prioritizing and putting in place. So if we were able to have a physical space for people to meet with the unhoused community, it would actively increase our number of people we are able to house. I'm able to provide any other supporting information as... This is all for literally homeless folks. This has... It does not include those who are couch-surfing, at risk of imminent homelessness, which the Drop-In Center serves those as well. So those are very vulnerable populations that are still in need of services and could be accessed at that space. If we were to include those numbers, we would probably be closer to 500-plus community members. I am in great support of this and think that it will be the first barrier removed in successfully accessing housing in the community. Thank you.
Good evening. My name's MJ Monahan. I'm a volunteer at the Drop-In Center, but I reside in Durham. I have some comments from some guests that would like to share some of their feelings on the Drop-In Center, so I'm just going to read, and I'm going to use their initials just to have a little privacy. C.S. says, "I've been homeless for over a year. I like the stability and items and services provided by the Drop-In Center. I enjoy being able to take a shower and particularly like the food. The volunteers see us as people. Not everyone does that. I like the opportunity to get survival gear. There's no place else to get it." D.M., "He's been homeless for over two years. I come here every Saturday and Wednesday because I can take a shower and get some good food." K.A. and B.L., they're a couple. "We come here for the food, shower, and clothes. The people here are nice. There's no drama here." And M.T., "He's been homeless for a year and a half. He's a veteran, and after returning from his second tour in the Middle East, PTSD caused him to become homeless. I come here for the food and clothing. I like the environment here and always get a helping hand from the volunteers." Wanted to share some of their comments. Thank you.
My name is John Davis, and I live at Danville Corner Road in Auburn. And I'm the treasurer of the board. I've got about 35 years of nonprofit CFO experience. And I just want to bore you all by saying that this is a very fiscally conservative organization. It's very thoughtful. We've grown tremendously, and every step of the way has been really thought through. And the board and the volunteers are all just top-rate. Mayor Harmon, I know you've visited. I'd invite you all to come down and visit it and see what's going on down there. It's really a community. We... It's really something that's been created that's really grown to something really great in my mind. And again, it's... We're watching the dollars. And every dollar that comes in, I will tell you, goes out to either food, supplies, or rent, or something that the guests need. So, thank you.
Good evening. My name is Nora Malloy. I'm from Ridge Road in Lewiston. I'm on the board of directors for the Drop-In Center, and I hope that speaks enough volume about my personal support for the initiative. But I'd like to take the opportunity to read a letter from someone who couldn't be here tonight. This is from Todd McKenna with Adwell Health Partners. And this is one of the folks who takes advantage of the opportunity on Wednesday to come in and connect with clients at the Drop-In Center. "Auburn City Council, my name is Todd McKenna. I'm a medical social worker and team lead with Adwell Health Partners, formerly at Andrus Goggin Home, Health, and Hospice. My team and I have been working tirelessly with the patrons and volunteers at the Drop-In Center on Pleasant Street in Auburn for over a year and a half now. My team and I can tell you firsthand what a valued resource the Drop-In Center is to the city of Auburn. Not only does the center provide nourishing meals to its patrons, it gives those struggling with homelessness a place to meet with social workers, community partners, and other homeless advocates. I can honestly say that because of the Drop-In Center providing a place for me to meet with my patients experiencing homelessness, I have assisted six individuals and families in being permanently housed." In health, Todd McKenna. Thank you.
Good evening. My name's Ginny Starbird. I live in Lisbon. However, I have been a part of the Drop-In Center since day one. So for two and a half years, I have been there Wednesdays and Saturdays and Mondays. I just want to add something that I didn't put in my little blurb here. We are currently seeing veterans, we are seeing elderly, and we have a family right now with three children. So we're seeing people that have never had this need before. So keep that in mind. I was one of the original team members, and there are a number of people in this room who signed on to feed the unhoused. I don't think any of us had any idea what we would become, but as I look back two and a half years ago, I'm amazed at what we've been able to accomplish. The first day we were opened, I cooked the first meal, thinking that if we feed them, they will come. Well, they didn't, not that day. So I fed the volunteers the huge pan of chicken stew I had made. They didn't come the next week either. But we persevered, and gradually, one by one, they started coming. For the first few weeks, it might have been five or six, then eight or 10, then 20, then 30, and they kept coming. Greg has provided a fact sheet that I think has been made available to all of you. We are now seeing anywhere between 160 to 180 hungry people every week. And they are not just the unhoused. We also provide 25 takeout meals every Saturday for Dan Campbell to deliver to the tents. We are providing not just good meals for breakfast and lunch, but showers, clothing, food clinics... Foot clinics, sorry, tents, sleeping bags, and to-go meals. Our board of directors meets two times a month. We're working on a strategic plan and have plans for a capital campaign. I'm asking that you take the time to listen to everyone who's speaking tonight and be aware that we desperately need a space where we can provide services and continue to do what we do well. We need your help to be able to continue this successful program. Thank you.
Hello, I'm Amy Smith, and I'm from Durham. And I'm also a volunteer with the Lewiston Auburn Community in Action Team and the Root Cellar. I help collect and deliver basic household items to new immigrants and newly housed residents of both Lewiston and Auburn. As a volunteer, I spend a lot of time driving around both Lewiston and Auburn, and I see firsthand the huge issue these two communities have with increasing homelessness. My family has provided sleeping bags, care packages, Dunkin' Donuts cards, and more for our unhoused. It's especially heartbreaking in the winter to see these people sleeping outside during freezing temperatures. These are some of our most vulnerable citizens, including the mentally ill, the elderly, veterans, those suffering from addiction, and those who can simply no longer afford a place to live because of Maine's soaring rent prices and housing crisis. Auburn is one of the only cities in our state that does not have a homeless shelter. Creating a warming center at 121 Mill Street would be a great first step in providing much-needed support for our unhoused community members. I ask you to vote in favor of this proposal. Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Patricia Widler. I live up on Lake Street in Auburn, and I've been a volunteer with the Drop-In Center since it started. And I am very grateful to Auburn and all that it has done to help the Drop-In Center. And I just want to sort of talk very briefly, not overlap with what other people said about the community part and the resource part. One of the things that I find is that when people come to our center, they have had multiple challenges working with providers. Some have not shown, sometimes providers, there's a big changeover. So one of the things that our center does is because the providers come to the center and then also because the volunteers can communicate with the providers if they don't show up, is there's a sense of continuity, and there's also a sense of hope that you're going to come in on Wednesday. And if you can't meet with the provider that you thought was going to be there, at least you can do a telephone call or you can follow up. So that whole thing about having a center and where it's stable and where you come in, you know that you're going to be treated as a human being, that you're welcome, that you can take care of other needs, but also that you can meet with really decent resource people. And Auburn has provided quite a few, whether it's the general assistance manager, the homeless coordinator, and there's a bunch that have gone on to take different positions. So the community part that comes as a result of the guests working with the volunteers, working with the providers, is quite lovely. And I think that that sort of... The communication and and just working together is what makes the Drop-In Center helpful to people. And we do have increasing numbers of children, I think, as Ginny put. I think we had like eight children on Wednesday because school's out, and so parents are bringing their kids in. Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Bill Lowenstein, and my septic system that you voted on tonight is at 62 Johnson Road in North Auburn. I am... Excuse me, I'm also a member of Auburn's Ad Hoc Committee on Homelessness. I was going to talk to you tonight about my experience as the Associate Director of the State's Office of Substance Abuse and also as President of the Board of the Sexual Self-Prevention and Response Services and what it means to successfully combine services and the impact and the improvement on treatment outcomes. But I figured it's been a long evening, and you'd be bored to death with it. So I want to tell you a personal story. So bear with me for just a minute. I'm a cancer survivor. I have lived with chronic lymphocytic leukemia for the last 13 years. In order to survive those last 13 years, I've had to undergo chemotherapy twice. The last in 2020, and I got to check survived chemo during COVID off my bucket list, which I hope no one ever has to do again. And as a result of that, my leukemia is treatable, but it's not curable. And so that means I have to have regular medical checkups. And so for the last several years, I've been going to a standalone cancer center at one of our local hospitals. That cancer center was being built when I was having chemo the last time. And the reason that cancer center is now a standalone entity is because people at that hospital looked at the fact that services for cancer patients were scattered all over that hospital. They were here and there. They were at distances that for healthy people may not have been a problem. But for those of us that were just trying to get to our car without being sick that day, to have to travel several hundred yards to go to x-ray was a task that was impossible and unbearable to do. The concept of that cancer center was to bring all those services into one facility, to one area where people could be there, congregate, get services, not have to go anyplace. That is the concept we're talking about, about the Mill Street building. We're taking a look at bringing all services available to our entire population, homelessness and others experiencing difficulty to have one safe place, to be able to get out of the weather, to get some shelter, to get some food, maybe some clothing, to maybe have some prevention services. I was on a Zoom meeting talking about another community in this country who have a prevention component to their homelessness program where they ask people to start calling them six months before they become homeless. We're nowhere near that, but the possibility exists that we can. This is a wonderful foundation for us to take a look at and start to address our homeless problem. It's not the magic bullet. It's not going to solve... It's not going to solve all the problems. But it's a wonderful start, and I want to thank you for entertaining such a proposal. Thank you.
Hello, my name is Kitsey Claxton, and I live at 72 Danbury Drive in Auburn. I've been a volunteer at the Drop-In Center since it began. And several volunteers and leaders of the Drop-In Center have spoken very eloquently tonight and persuasively, I would say, about the significant impact of the Drop-In Center, and I'm not going to try to add to that. But I will just add a couple more of the voices of our guests at the Drop-In Center. And just as they can feel invisible, they can also feel unheard. And so I think that it's really important that their voices be shared with you. One guest has shared with us that he's a veteran who was convicted of a felony over 10 years ago. At the Drop-In Center, I was able to take a shower and get some clothing, which allowed me to go to a job interview. It's important to be able to get out of the elements, even for just a few hours, a couple days a week. The meals here are healthy. Everyone here is treated with respect and dignity. This place helps us move from survival mode to living mode. PB recently found an apartment because of the Wednesday Moving Forward Program, which is the program that Patty and Jen spoke about when community providers are present. This place has all the things I need in one place. Food, clothes, supplies, toilet paper, showers. The volunteers are great. They are proactive in talking with us. And finally, another guest has said, "Coming here gives us the feeling that we belong somewhere." Here we get stability, structure, and hope. A lot of us don't have anyone. The Drop-In Center gives us more chances and doesn't turn anyone away. Without the Drop-In Center, I don't know where I would be. And I would just add personally that I don't think any of us who have the privilege of housing knows what it is like on a day-to-day basis to be without shelter, the challenges, the barriers. And I would just add to that, that I thank you, the Auburn City Council, for putting this proposal forward, and very much hope that you will approve and move forward with the Mill Street building. Thank you.
Hello, my name is Ken Bragg. I live at Pond Road in Lewiston, but I volunteer at the shelter. And I got to tell you, they should change the name, because it should be the Amazing Recovery Center. Nowhere else can you go in, take a shower, get a set of clothes, and help finding a job or help finding an apartment. It's a great opportunity for the city of Auburn. It's a great opportunity for us. But there are two words I want you to remember: guests. The people that come to our program are treated as guests. We welcome them, we're part of them, we love them, and nobody has to have a hassle. I also pick up the cigarette butts at the end of the day. And that mist, I put out ashtrays, and I pick up. And I have never seen a needle, a smoke joint, people using drugs. I have never seen, I've been there for about two months. And I was in the National Guard and in the Army for 24 years, nine months, 14 days, and 10 hours. But I've never, I've never seen a more well-coordinated program in my entire life. It's great. It's the greatest opportunity center you've ever seen. And I'd like somebody to come down some Wednesday, check it out. It's great, and I'm the new guy.
Good evening. My name is Carol Holmes. I live at 60 Academy Street in Auburn. I'm also the co-director of the Seventh Day Adventist Food Pantry. And it has been our passion to come alongside the Drop-In Center to provide food for those who have food insecurity. And every person that comes to the center has a mouth. Every person that comes to the center needs to eat. And every person that comes to the center needs to be treated with dignity. And that's what we want to provide. And we want, this center, if they had it at 121 Mill Street, it would provide a commercial kitchen that would be greatly used to help feed these people. And so I ask that you approve this measure, because it's desperately needed in our community. Thank you.
My name is Dave Vilidu. I live at 72 High Street. I am on the committee that's supporting this. And I've worked formerly for Tri-County, now Spurwink, for 18 years. I can tell you that I'm a block and a half away from the center. And until I got a call from Patty asking for help, I didn't know it was there. That's how well-run it is. I've never seen anybody in my yard. I've never seen anybody around my home. My wife and my kids are there. We've never had any issues. When a drop-in center can run so smoothly that you don't know it's there, that's pretty good. So that's why I'm here talking today, not as a committee member or anything else, as a neighbor, saying that I've never had an issue there. And I've gone there, and I've helped out there, and people see me and know me, and still respect me in my home. So, thank you.
Good evening. My name is Catherine Ryder, and I actually live in Wyndham, Maine. But my work home is Lewiston-Auburn. And I have been proud to be a servant of these communities for 34 years. First as the employee of Tri-County Mental Health Services, the last 13 years as their CEO, until I reached out to our good colleagues at Spurwink Services and asked if they would acquire our organization because of financial reasons. So I am standing here before you this evening as the Vice President of Special Projects for Spurwink Services and in favor of the community center. And I would like to say to you that we have spent years developing programs that move out into our communities, because we have known for a very long time that in order to make an impact, we can't sit in our offices waiting for people to come to us. We need to be, as I like to refer to it, boots on the ground, out in the community, going to where people are, meeting them in the community, in the parks, sometimes in the encampments, and addressing their needs. So we have several programs, some funded, as you have funded Project Support U here in Auburn, and our colleagues in Lewiston as well, which provide co-response with law enforcement, fire and rescue, as well as programs that have folks that are literally walking the streets on a daily basis, looking to support folks. I can't tell you what a difference it would make for us to be able to serve folks in a single location and have other colleagues in the community also providing services available so that we could do what we refer to in our field as full wraparound services. I think Bill did a wonderful job of talking about having all services in one place so people don't have to go to multiple locations. And I will also tell you, in our work, we are required to have releases from folks in order to coordinate services. And if you have to find someone to keep gathering releases to coordinate a multitude of services, you can see how that would get increasingly complex. I would also like to say thank you to the incredible humans who have stood up here to provide testimony about the work they're doing on a volunteer basis. It's phenomenal and noteworthy that you are all here as a concerted voice to say, "Please do this." The data speaks for itself. Our unhoused individuals are rapidly increasing. State of Maine, per capita, has the highest rate of deployment in the country. We have the highest rates of veteran suicide. We have very high rates of unhoused veterans across our communities. And Andrusgoggin County has the second-highest rate of veterans in the state, followed, following Cumberland County. So we have work to do here. Our population, per our mission, has been those with behavioral health diagnosis, mental illness, substance misuse, intellectual disabilities. But we have been, a couple of decades now, with a laser focus on our veterans as well. And so it is all of us. It is our family members, it is our neighbors. And so I implore you to consider moving this forward and know that we will be there to help provide the supports that are needed. Thank you.
Mayor Harmon, members of the council. My name is Art Dingly. I live at 512 Danville Corner Road. And I'm here to speak in favor of allowing the Drop-In Center to move to 121 Mill Street. I'm familiar with the day-to-day operation of the Drop-In Center. Everything you've heard about it from these folks tonight is absolutely true. And I've been to the Mill Street property to look at it, make myself familiar with the exterior of the building, its immediate surrounds, and the neighborhood that it sits in. I believe that it's a perfect location for that purpose. It's a little bit further to walk from the Mill Street location to other destinations in Auburn than it is to walk from the current location of the Drop-In Center to those same places. But it's not bad. It's very doable. You can look at it on Google Maps. I think it's 15 or 16 minutes to downtown Auburn from the Mill Street location. There's a CityLink bus stop right there. The parking is adequate for staff, for volunteers, for any guests who drive. This would not in any way add to traffic on the upper Mill Street side at all. I want to thank the city council for being a council that values innovation when it comes to solving difficult problems, in this case through public-private partnership, which I think is great, and I hope we see a lot more of that from you as time goes on. I have one concern about this arrangement. As I understand it, the city would charge the Drop-In Center rent. Now, the Drop-In Center was a 100% volunteer-driven, donation-driven, shoestring operation, which has provided for the last several years very important services to the most vulnerable. And you've heard from these folks about what those services are and how important they are. The idea of charging that organization money to continue to provide that service to the city just strikes me as fundamentally unfair. So I'd ask you to think about making the arrangement rent-free. Thank you very much.
Hi there. My name is William County. I live at 29 Library Avenue. I just want to thank you guys for your time. I personally was here to support my friend Dan. I had no idea that it was the Palace Center that we were talking about. And I personally am so thrilled that this is the discussion that we are having. I am in full support of him. I've been with Dan, and we've brought clothing to there. And I've witnessed the beauty that's at that place and the smiles on the homeless people's faces. I also personally have witnessed the tragedy of what has happened in our cities in the Lewiston-Auburn area. I've been with Dan in the middle of wintertime, and we've had to deliver propane to people in tents that were freezing. We've had to pull people out in storms and bring them to our house overnight, put them into hotels. It's quite a tragedy. That's why I'm personally speaking up. I had no idea that I was going to, so I'm just volunteering to do that. And I just ask for your guys' support. Thank you.
Hello. My name's Carmen Broshue. I am a volunteer, actually, I live at 71 Fessenden Avenue in South Portland, Maine. I'm a volunteer at the Drop-In Center. One thing I want to say is, I come all the way from South Portland. We have our own homeless issues in Portland, because it's such a loving, connected place, and people are so respectful. And I hope that you will accept the proposal and do the community service center, and also have us be a part of it.
My name's Diego Broshue St. Pyle. I live with my mom, Carmen. She, we do, she's my adult house person I live with now. And I work at the Drop-In Center in Auburn, and I take my time to vacuum and do stuff. And I would love to see if that, if Spurwink could help work with the Drop-In Center, take time and help and do stuff for them. And I talked to my teachers about them helping, and they would agree to help and do this program, the Drop-In Center in Auburn. Yeah, so, thank you.
My name is Bruce Netto. I live at 14 Truman Avenue in Auburn. I want to thank you all for serving. I know it's a tough time to serve. I don't know if I can get everything I wanted to say out in three minutes. I'll do my best. I may run a little bit over. I want to thank all my community members for coming out, you know, and taking the one thing that we can't replace, which is our time. First, I just wanted to give a quick overview about Mill Street. It's a building. And when I think of buildings and assets for the town, for, I mean, the town, the city of Auburn, you'd like to see it at its highest potential use. We're in a spot in the road in which we're trying to just fill a hole. And we're trying to fill it with Mill Street. Mill Street is next to a potentially really precious resource, what is a precious resource, which is Barker Mills. And to me, potentially, the best use of Barker, of Mill Street, because of its proximity to Barker Mills, could be some sort of daycare center. Some sort of center that was facilitated with the city to provide the possibility. Because we know that childcare is something that's challenging our community, challenging our employers, and would be something that if it was located there, you might be able to tap into the community of Barker Mills, many of whom are elderly, that might like to help out at a daycare center and help that enrichment. You might be able to reach out to businesses in the community of Auburn and say, "Hey, you know, would you help us facilitate this daycare center in the sense of sponsoring some, we would allow you to sponsor some openings?" So if you're a small business and you say, "I'm looking to hire an employee, I can get a position, I can get a slot in that daycare center." So they're not able to necessarily, the employer, have their own in-house, and not a large enough employer to have their own in-house daycare center, such as, say, a Unum or an LL Bean or a larger employer. But we might be able to do something that would be innovative, that would be able to allow slots for daycare, that smaller employers could sponsor so many slots so they could have for their employees, a position of a daycare being provided to help them attract and retain workers. The other aspect I wanted to mention, it's very impressive, everyone who's come here and spoken tonight. This homeless issue is an issue of trying to fix broken people. And broken people are what's causing huge, huge challenges in our community. And there's, those broken people are many communities inside that community. All of us know people who have come on hard times, that are broken, are facing issues, whether it be substance abuse, whether it be mental health issues. What we need to do, and what I'm urging the council to do, because I would assume, and I could be wrong, is there anyone here from the governor's office tonight? Is there anyone here from our state delegation tonight? Is there anyone here from the federal delegation, the Congress, the senators' offices tonight? We need to get them.
Great, thank you very much.
Okay. Sorry I went over. But we need to get their involvement if we're going to solve these issues. Thank you.
Are there other members of the public that would like to address the council on?
this agenda item?
My name is Fred Broder, uh, at 83 Sixth Street in Auburn. Uh, I remember taking a Bible course when the instructor talked about the culture around the time of Abraham, and it was one of hospitality. And, uh, in, in our Judeo-Christian ethic that's been around for 4,000 years was the, a foundation of this country, and in the Hebrew Testament, talked about welcoming the stranger, the orphan, and the widow. Uh, in the Christian Testament, talk about serving the least of our brothers and sisters. Uh, I would hope that this council would follow that compassion in serving these wonderful brothers and sisters who need our help at times. We all need help at times, and I don't see any other proposal than this one to start to improve the services that we have. So, I would strongly support this proposal. Uh, my spouse's work is a volunteer at the drop-in center, and she talks about the wonderful people she works with and the wonderful guests that she has. Thank you very much. Bye.
Are there other members of the public that would like to address the council on this agenda item? If not, we'll close public comment, um, discussion by the council. Excuse me. Go ahead.
Good evening. My name is Sasha Anna Stazoff. I am here from the South Portland community. I have worked in Auburn for the last 24 years in the Auburn School Department, and it's been my honor to serve this community. In the last three years, my role has been running the homeless education program for our school department, and I couldn't help but notice that this population was not spoken about this evening, so I wanted to make sure that they were also represented. Over the last three years, we have seen an increase from 114 students to 229 students, to this year, 234 students, who are either underhoused or unhoused. And I think it's important for our community to hear and recognize that this number is building every single year. The families that I work with are not even represented in these numbers either, so this is just the number of children in our community. This doesn't acknowledge the adults as well that are in their households. So, I want to say again, 234 students this school year. Um, the referrals that I'm making for the families that I work with are oftentimes out of the Auburn community because the resources are not here in one place, and so I'm sending families and students to point A, to point B, to point C, to point D, to access. Transportation is an issue getting there. Sometimes it's employment because maybe the drop-in center is not open during a time when families can access it. So, having more availability for our families, I think is going to be very important for this community. And we're looking at families who may be underhoused, but keep in mind that the families that are unhoused may have been underhoused at one point. Uh, and so if we have a way and a space to prevent our families who are underhoused right now from becoming unhoused, it would benefit our community immensely. Thank you for considering.
Are there other members of the public that would like to address the council on this agenda item? Not seeing any. We'll close public comment, um, discussion by the council. Council Gary.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'm as close as it can get. This is in my backyard, and this is not a decision that I've made lightly for living at Barker. I, I, a tenant from our house came today and spoke, and they spoke about the stuff going on at Barker and sort of alluded to the, the, their, their S- the security farm, firm that comes, and they walk the grounds at Barker Townhouse, Espinade, Great Falls Plaza, Broad Street, Squire Hills, a whole gamut of places, and it's not because we're afraid of homeless. I've lived at Barker for 47 years. We've had a, we've always had somebody come around, but they were harmless, and, and it's not always a homeless person. We got people coming down from Barker Trail, and they'll go up Barker Trail, they'll sit, they'll party, they'll smoke their grass and do whatever else, and then during the night, since I live over on the side of the building of Barker that faces Barker Trail, I can hear them party. I can hear them throw beer bottles or some sort of bottles, and I can hear them sometimes when they miss the trail and come landing in front of my door almost. Part of the reason we have security isn't because of these issues per se. We have internal tenant issues in our house that I'm not proud of. We have people that have drinking issues. They allow people from the outside coming in. When, when their guests come in and go out to smoke, because there's no smoking in the building, they come back in the building, they can't find a place where they're, they were visiting, so they bang on other people's doors. So, that's part of the reason why. Or, they'll let people in, and they're so polluted, they go sleep in a spare room, which is nothing to dealing with the housing. Same as, we have people at Barker that don't pay attention to their medicines, and they may over-medicate, and then they cause trouble. We've also got people of all various health issues that have threatened people and hurt people, and the security is to keep the peace from within. I'm not proud to say it, but that is what's happening, and that's being honest. That's a little-known fact at Barker about all these incidents, and Barker's staff, they try hard, but once people get in, the process to get them out takes a long time. The, I see a benefit of this drop-in center because there's a lot of tenants at Barker Mill that could use some of the services there. They could use the friendship of not having to stay at Barker because of lack of potato, uh, lack of transportation, lack of money. They would welcome being able to go out their yard, go down the roadway to get a meal, to, to, to maybe share a craft with somebody. I took a list. I drew pros and cons. The pros outweighed everything, and I am willing to put my butt on the line to support this because I see the need of it. We don't have another place that we can get up and running to take care of people before they, they fall over the edge and become totally not housed. We also got to encourage people that are homeless to know that they are valued and thought of, and they are people. People will act like you, if you treat a person with respect, they also return the gestures, and they amplify what you project. Again, I'm supporting this with my whole heart.
Other members of the council, questions or discussion? Council Wayne.
Uh, I just want to say how impressed I am with all of these people, and I see a lot of really caring people. I see people who are role models, and I think that what they've been doing at the Pleasant Street Drop-In Center is, is phenomenal.
Council Melx.
Yeah, I'd, I'd also like to say I've, I've been impressed by the people that came up and spoken, and clearly the drop-in center is a, is a good organization. Um, I, I do think it's my responsibility to speak for the taxpayer of Auburn, and I want to make sure that we all know that the taxpayer, taxpayers of Auburn are going to be asked to have a tax increase, that we have passed the budget. The taxpayers of Auburn are going to have a reassessment, and their taxes are going to go up. The taxpayers of Auburn are paying for the school, they're paying for the fire department, they're paying for the paramedics, they're paying for the police department, they're paying for public works. They're paying for a lot of things. They paid over a million dollars for this building. That's real money. And so, I want to make sure that when I hear Auburn's not doing anything for the people of Auburn, that the Auburn taxpayers are doing a lot for the people of Auburn, and, and this is something that, as I said, the Auburn taxpayers have paid a million dollars for this building. And so, it's, this isn't a free building. This isn't, this isn't something that, um, is just, it's obviously, it's empty, and it's going to take a lot of money to rehab that building. So, I know that there's a lot of people that I speak for when they say, you know, Auburn taxpayers are being asked to do, we have one of the highest mill rates in the state, and the taxes are going up and up, and it's to, it's important that we acknowledge that. And, and I want to make sure that everybody knows that there's people that would like to speak, but you, you will be perceived as being a very, a bad guy or a bad person because you want to talk about money in a situation where there's clearly a human interest and a human tragedy going on. But, this costs money, and we're talking, people are coming up and saying, who's going to, you know, why would we charge rent? Or, you know, I, I'm glad that Spurwink is, is coming up here and talking here because this is something that should not just be borne by the taxpayers of Auburn, and that I challenge the nonprofit community to come forward, and if this is something that we do, that it, this can't be just the taxpayers of Auburn bear this, bear this burden because they are providing for the people of Auburn. That's what I, that's what I had to say.
Other questions or comments by members of the council? Council Walker.
Thank you. I want to say thank you to everyone that came up here to tell us their story, where they stand, and what they think, but I do have some people from New Auburn that don't think exactly the same way you think. There are a lot of people that are living on the riverbanks out there that I bet not any of you have seen in a long time. I can take you to places where there is nothing but trash 10 feet from where they're living. The city ends up getting taken and taking care of all that trash in the end when they're removed from that area, or they decide that somebody will help them out to move to another place. Sometimes it's not always because they want to be moved either, but sometimes they're on private property. They just went there and decided that that's where their camp home is going to be. Last year, I asked the city manager to please help us on some private property because what they were leaving behind was a dump truck load of trash. People don't like that, especially if you're a property owner that your age, my age, got to go in there and try to clean up what's left behind. If the city says it's private property, we won't do it. Then we've got the ones that live on the riverbank that are on our property because we own the land that's near it. We, again, have to clean that up. I've been out in these places a thousand times, if not more. I never saw any of you out there. Glenn Holmes, he's the head of a whole department that takes care of all of these needs for whatever may be out there. I never seen him on the riverbank. I never seen him walking and checking to see where someone's calling that's got a problem. I'm glad you all volunteer to do whatever it is you're good at doing, but we have people that are very, very upset that we're moving to 121 Main Street or Mill Street or whatever building you want to call it. We started off calling it a warming center, I think, less than a month ago. Now, we've got a community resource center, and before we know it, we're going to have a home for people to stay in 24 hours a day, probably before we make a vote tonight. It's just crazy. It just goes on and on and on, and the amount of money, we're going to be at close to $2 million. I don't know if you read the budget at this point. Opera money. Opera money was given to us a long time ago, and now we got to spend it by Ju- July 30th, and they want to take 400 and something, 60, 80, $1,000 and put it into this building. No plans two years ago to do such a thing. The plan was to buy the building, probably eliminate it, tear it down, and hope to sell it to have some houses next to the river, which would make a lot of sense because of the tax money that would be coming in. I hope when they get done voting tonight for the people that want what they possibly will have tonight, that you put it to the best use possible, but we have Walton School, we have Showett High School, we have an old age building there. I pray to God that nothing happens to any one of them because we don't want something to come back and say to our mayor that has pushed this issue from the day he was elected, that I told you so. I've lived this thing, and I've lived it a long time, ever since it started. You can't even go by the park that, it's across from Rupes without seeing them laying on the, the blocks out there, the sidewalk, their clothes laying over the trash cans. People don't even dare to walk down through there. I've had two calls today. When are you going to clean that section up? That's the kind of thing we put up with. Glenn, do you go down there and ask them if they need a home to live in, or can I help you to move to a better place? I haven't seen him down there. I haven't seen any of you down there, but I've been down there three, four times. I've walked underneath the overpass that goes on, on Main Street just to see what kind of living we've got there. They have nothing but a bunch of rags to hang over the trash cans. We don't need to put them down there in a warming center. We need something better, and it's like the gentleman said earlier, we need the government, we need the state. We need a hell of a lot more people than just this six, seven councilmen that we have here. Thank you.
Are there questions or comments by the council? Council Cal.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Um, a couple comments. First, I also want to thank all those who came tonight, whether you spoke or whether you're here, um, in support or, or concerned, bringing concerns forward. Um, this is a difficult issue, and, and I think, um, we're, we're trying to find the best solution. Um, number one, I do think it's imperative that we do the best we can to support such an effective, um, volunteer organization in the drop-in center. The issue, the reality is, is that they're in a place right now, a location that's not sustainable, um, and we don't know where else it would be. If we lose what they do for this community, we're going to be that much further behind. Second of all, um, this, this building will not become a shelter. Uh, I don't agree with Council Walker on that point. Uh, I've asked, uh, Mr. Holmes about that specifically. It is not in the, in, it's not a structure that could become a long-term 24-hour home for people. Um, what is being proposed is a community resource center where we can put already-existing uh, social service teams that the city, uh, that are employed, and members that are employed by the city, in, in addition to those that are already in, uh, the location where those team members are. Um, under Mr. Holmes' leadership, we've had a, a very successful model of bringing multiple organizations together in order to be able to, uh, share resources, have warm handoffs, have what, uh, uh, we heard earlier today, the start of wraparound services. The opportunity of putting that group in Mill Street, uh, and in addition to the drop-in center and potentially, uh, other organizations that could fill in remaining spaces, that could then full, more fully round out those wraparound services for those in need, all those in need, is a huge opportunity. We have a building that did have a different purpose. The last thing that we voted on since I've been a member is that we were going to have a, a local business try to use that building. It wasn't successful. Um, and so, we're looking at a, uh, 1.2 million purchased by the city of Auburn, and there hasn't been, according to what we've heard from our staff, according to what we've heard from our staff, any useful, reasonable offers by others to come forward with something that would bring back that value. At the same time, we need a place to put the drop-in center and have better resources. Another thing that wasn't yet pointed out, I do think is important for us to be thinking about, is that currently we're using ARPA funds to lease space for the social, for Mr. Holmes' team, the social service departments, and we would be able to put them in a city-owned building where we would then be able to repurpose those dollars for the, for the short term. And there is a well-thought-out plan. What Mr. Holmes said was a worst-case scenario in terms of being able to bring in dollar amounts where we could help subsidize that from organizations that would help subsidize it. I think that I agree with, with Council Milks. There's a benefit, there's a reason why we're asking the drop-in center to pay rent because it will offset that. And I'm very confident that the drop-in center will be able to bring in money from those who want to, to contribute to that, to other organizations across our city to help pay for that so that it's nonprofit, public, private partnership. So for all those reasons, I'm in support of this. I do not think we can wait another day before we create a better opportunity for starting to address this. I fully agree that we need to be continuing to advocate for our state and our federal government to be allocating dollars for this. But right now there, we don't have the adequate resources and I think we do have a responsibility to contribute to some level. So I'm in support of this, this community center at 121 Mill Street.
Other questions or comments by the council? Council White.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I concur. Thank you to everybody that came out tonight. It is not an easy task to come out either side to speak, but I, I commend you for doing that and helping our community. I have been an avid supporter of trying to find and wanting to have something that's going to be a well-rounded drop-in center that's going to be able to serve the needs of individuals that need services, that they can go meet with different departments, get a plan and walk out of there feeling accomplished and having self-worth that they have, are on a better track to that they will find and succeed after coming out of that center. I totally agree with Council Milks. This is owned by the taxpayer and we need to be cognizant of their, that we have used taxpayer funds to build, build, buy this center and we need to be cognizant about that and the money that we spend upon, upon it. But there is, there is a, there is issues out there that we are facing every day that homelessness and individuals that are, are, are struggling with that, that we need to be cognizant about. And I, I do support this, but we need to be looking to, as Council Walker and individuals said, that we need to be looking for the state's support and, and other communities in there and trying to step up to the plate with us to help these individuals. It is not just us. We need, we need the state's involvement in here to step up. Thank you.
Other questions or comments? Council Platt.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I want to echo other councillors' comments to thank everyone who is here who spoke. Also thank you for everyone who didn't speak and still has an opinion. I think it's important, these, this is where the magic happens. This is where rubber meets the road. So thank you everyone for imparting your opinions and knowledge on us. As I've been thinking about this issue over the last week, I'm trying to think of it from the perspective of an at-large city councillor. I'm trying to ask myself, what's the good for the city? What's the bad for the city? Pros and cons, as, as Counselor Gary said. From the city perspective, to me it's a no-brainer. This is only good for the city at large. Obviously there's another piece to that and that's, is this good for the people who live there? Coming into tonight, I have spoken with many constituents, some for it, some against it, and I think it's important in this moment that we're sensitive to everyone's opinions. I do support this. I think this is good for the city. Furthermore, I think that a lot of the negative issues that exist, that people are bringing up, loitering, trash, drug use, personally I think those things are worse at a non-staffed building. I've been very impressed hearing from the volunteers, the leadership. I've been impressed to hear someone say that they live near the current center and they didn't even know it until a year and a half ago. I think that speaks volumes to the professionalism of the organization. That said, I don't think that means we can ignore the voices of the people who live nearby. I think that, and correct me if I'm wrong, but this is the first reading of something that takes two, this is a one and done?
Yeah, this is in order, so it'd be a single vote.
Okay, understood. But as we move forward, I do think it's important that everything we authorize and everything we allow, we do it with conditions of understanding so that if there needs to be a curfew, there's a curfew. If there needs to be quiet times, there's quiet times. If there needs to be increased police presence or increased security measures, we need to consider all of those things. There are many people who live next to this building. Again, it's my belief that this building will be in far better hands in the future than it is vacant. I truly do believe that. But I also think we need to not stop listening to neighbors. We need to continue to listen. I think my hope is that what we will find is that the operators of the nonprofits there, the people visiting, the guests as they were referred to today, as well as the neighbors, I think, I hope that everyone will be surprised that there is, there's a symbiosis that exists there and everyone can exist collectively. I think the people who run the organization know that this can happen and suspect that it may in the future. My hope is that we can get the buy-in from everybody and this can work. If we do not take this opportunity to comment about taxpayers, any other solution to this problem will cost us more money. And I was called out after last week's meeting, I made some comments about money when really we should be talking about humanity and I apologize for talking about money instead of humanity. However, money is real and any other option we have will cost us more. So I'm in support of this and I thank you everyone for your opinion.
Other questions or comments from the council? Council White.
I worked in housing for 40 and a half years. When Bill Lowenstein talked about, you know, bringing services together, this is something that Lewiston Auburn Area Services for the Homeless Committee I was on 30 years ago talked about and hasn't done anything about for years and years and years. When we first started talking about it, it was a problem. Now it's become a crisis. This is why we have the Pleasant Street Drop-In Center. I'm absolutely convinced that what Council Platts is right, the costs of homelessness are far greater if you don't take actions such as this. Another step that needs to be taken is housing first. The state is starting to make money available. A lady in Sanford who runs a housing authority is going to get funding to do a housing first model in Sanford. I believe they're doing it in Bangor. We could do that here. It adds to the inventory and it takes people off the street with services so that they can stay off the street. There's all kinds of solutions, but we do need help from other levels of government. When Marty Sidlowski was talking in the workshop, he stated that Auburn Housing Authority has 500 to 510 vouchers, Section 8 Housing Choice vouchers. When I left, when I retired from Auburn Housing Authority in early 2020, right into the pandemic, we had 590 vouchers. That is a failure of the federal government to provide adequate house, money for this program to support the high costs of rents that have escalated through the roof as the lady from Pine, I think she's from Pine Tree, but Legal Services lady pointed out. So there's all kinds of things we need to do. This is one little piece, but it's, it's a start.
Counsel Gary.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'm sorry for being remiss for not thanking you all for coming and sharing your pros and your cons. If you haven't had a chance to show your, to say your cons, you can always catch up with me after this meeting or during this week. You can always catch my phone number and I either will meet with you or call you. I too will work with all the councillors and, and support what Counselor Platts has said, that we will put in parameters and goals and make sure that everybody's best efforts will help in the long run and if there's any concerns, we will try to nip it in the bud and provide resources in order to counter anything that may come up.
Other comments or questions from the council? I would make a few points. I think it's really important that we understand that homelessness, food insecurity, housing insecurity is a very complex issue and what's proposed at 121 Mill Street is just part of a solution. I don't think our work will be done. I think the comments are well-taken regarding federal and state assistance. Currently our ad hoc homeless committee and the Lewiston Shelter Committee are working together. I think it's pretty clear to them that a comprehensive residential shelter is not going to happen in Lewiston, Auburn without significant state and federal funding. Even if someone were to fund that today, you're talking something that's a couple years away before it would be operational. In the meantime, we have a significant issue that we need to deal with. And I think that the first thing I would say is, look at our model. Let's not go backwards, right? Today, the Pleasant Street Drop-In Center is at risk of having to move because they cannot stay where they are long-term. As we've heard people say that came to the podium tonight, this is the program in Auburn. The second thing I would say is that we've seen success with our community and business development operation embedding social services providers with them. This will allow us an opportunity to build on that, not just to have a greater number of social service providers, but also to have the drop-in center co-located where the service providers have a better opportunity to work with the guests to try to find solutions to move them out of their current situation. Relative to the cost, I think everyone realizes the city paid a million dollars for this building for a completely different purpose. Not just this council, but prior councils have considered various options. None of those have come to fruition and here we are trying to find a solution to help with this problem and this is an available facility. I would say to the people that live in the area, as I have when they've called me, I'm not wedded to 121 Mill Street, right? What I'm supporting is a co-located service where we can have wraparound services and do a better job at trying to help the people in this city that are greatest need. But this is our option and for those that might vote against this because you don't like the location, where is your alternative plan? We've had two months of, of executive sessions, workshop and council meetings, we've had no other alternative plan. So if it's not here, where are we going to do this? Relative to the taxpayer issue, yes, we purchased this building quite some time ago. Fitting this building out will not have any impact on the tax levy in the city of Auburn. What's proposed here is a combination of ARPA funds and as Counselor Walker pointed out, we received these funds several years ago. The amount that we're talking about is residual funds from projects that were completed under budget or for which there were never enough applicants to use up the money. So these are residual funds. We're at the end of the period. The council needs to decide this evening what to do with those funds or we'll have to send them back to the federal government. In addition to that, there's state housing money, a quarter of a million dollars in this fit-up cost is going to be coming from state housing. We talked about that in the prior workshop. Look, I think any type of a facility like this, there are operational concerns. But I think that both the city staff and the nonprofits that will participate in this aren't just concerned with some people in their community in need. They are coming forward because they're concerned about their community. And if there are operational issues, the city staff and the various nonprofit service providers that are there will work together to find a way to make this work, just like they have done in the locations they are in the past. So I would like to thank everyone that came out. I think it's important to get public input and have people make their opinions known to the council and I would urge, urge the councillors to vote in support of the pending motion. Council Walker.
Yeah, I have a question for you. There was a letter sent from Mike Alder, I think is how his last name is spelled. He, he offered in his letter two or three different places that, that he thought that maybe we could look at or the manager could look at. Did anybody do that? Did anyone answer him back? That's why our taxpayers take the time to send letters out to councillors and to you and whoever.
Mr. Manager, are you aware?
I did respond to him.
No. I, I didn't get a, a letter from him to you, Mr. Manager?
I'd have to go back and look, but I don't recall seeing.
I, I would say.
It, it was an email he sent to Cowan, Milks, myself, Walker, Platts and Whiting and Gary.
Would you, would you say the places that he offered up?
Yes. He had offered, let me offer a few other location suggestions. The old Peck Building in Lewiston, the old Nap Shoe Building in Lewiston, the DHHS Building in Lewiston, the old Walgreens store on Union Street Bypass, the old police station in Auburn and last was Mill Number Five in Lewiston, is what he suggested.
Thank you, Counsel Weisner. I guess I would say that part of the issue here is access to these buildings. So the city of Auburn isn't going to be running a program in the city of Lewiston. City of Lewiston will be running similar programs and will have the challenges of finding a site in Lewiston. The locations in Auburn are privately owned and are not for sale at this moment. And I, I would say to response to that question that, I don't know about other councillors, but I know that the city manager, city staff and I have spent a lot of time since the first of the year, looking at a whole variety of potential locations to repurpose for this and at this point have not had any success in identifying another location in Auburn. Are there other questions or comments? Council White.
I pulled up that email and there's only one building that might qualify, the old Walgreens store on Union Street Bypass. That would cost us probably twice as much. And so that's a illogical idea, which I, would make no sense to me. And none of the others are, would be either in our city or available to us.
Other questions or comments from the council?
I believe, I believe the Wal, Walgreen, whatever you want to call it, is 11,000 square feet at $15 a foot. So I don't know if that's out of the range of renting or not.
Counsel Cowan.
I think that there's the cost of renting or purchasing that building and then there's the cost of renovating that building in order to make it what we need. So I would agree with Counselor Whiting that it's very likely going to be a more expensive endeavor than to use an already-owned building that we have an estimated renovation cost of eight, just under $812,000.
Other questions or comments by the council? Council ready for the question? Vote will be by show of hands. All in favor? Those opposed? Five having voted in the affirmative and two in the negative, the motion is adopted. The next item is item 12 on a new business, Order 90-07-01-2024, allocating $438,702.83 in American Rescue Act funds for the 121 Mill Street Resource Center and relocating the Business and Community Development Department. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Moved by Counsel Whiting to adopt as written. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Counselor Cowan. We'll open public comment. If there's any members of the public that would like to address the council on this item, please approach the. please approach the podium, provide your name and address. Seeing none, we'll close the public session. Discussion by the council. Council Milk?
I'm in favor of using the ARPA money for this since we passed, and otherwise we've got to give it back, so.
Council Walker?
Yeah, the ARPA money way back a year and a half ago, we had asked for a cost to the old Pettingill Skating Rink there to put in a heating and air-conditioning unit. I don't remember what that number was, but back then, because of the number coming in, we chose to take that off the table. If, I believe if the council would have known there was going to be $400,000 plus left, that would have been taken care of, and that's something we've been trying to get done in the turf facility now for more than five years. But it was taken off the table because it was too much money to do the job. So I would have used this 400 and something thousand to do the job.
Other comments or questions by the council? Council Whiting?
Just a comment is that we would have had no way of knowing at that time that this money would be available. It was only after all the programs were run through and you had money left over in these various programs that we were able to find out that this money was in fact available.
Other questions or comments from the council?
Mr. Mayor, a quick question. If this money is approved, Mr. Manager, a question for you. What additional measures are being taken from like an RFP process once, before this money starts getting spent? I know we have a rough outline from Landry and French. Are we taking that any further, or are those the estimates that we're going off of?
So we often gain, we often gather some estimates just so that we have a baseline. But we do follow, even with these funds, all of our financial purchasing policies. So anything that would trigger an RFP will be done by that in accordance with the policy.
Other questions or comments from the council? Council ready for the question? Vote will be by show of hands. All those in favor? Opposed? Six having voted in the affirmative and one in the negative, the motion is adopted. That concludes the new business. We'll move on to the second open session of the night. If there's members of the public that would like to speak to the council on any item related to city business that's not on tonight's agenda, please approach the podium, provide your name and address.
My name is Dale Carlson. I live in Gray, Maine. I spent 24 years developing the root cellar, both in Portland and Lewiston. I've been working with Dan Campbell, and I had him on my radio program one day, and he told me about the homeless there, and I thought, what can I do?
Sir, are you, so this open session is limited to items that are not on tonight's agenda?
It's not on tonight's agenda. It's about, it is about homelessness. And I just want to remind folks that there's 20 weeks left until Thanksgiving. And Thanksgiving, it gets really, really cold. I spent last winter working from early fall through the winter at Kennedy Park, and I saw pure misery on families' faces and people's faces as they dealt with the cold. We were able to open a, because of what you did, we were able to open eight weeks of warming shelter at the United, Calvary United Methodist Church in Lewiston. That's no longer available. There's more homeless than ever, you know, and I hate to, I hate to say this. There are costs to this, but these people are not all drug addicts. They're not all, you know, as it's been so well said all night. What are we going to do? What's the plan? The plan seems to be, you know, kicking them out and shuffling them around everywhere else. I have been to some of these homeless camps. I was in one in Biddeford that's in beautiful shape because the people care about what's going on. There's a responsible bunch of people running it. I was up at one in Lewiston. That was a good homeless center. I've seen other areas that are not well maintained. But I think there should be some way to deal with the problem, and I don't know what that is other than we need shelter for these people. That's it.
Good evening. Michael Lemay, Snowwood Drive. You're getting pretty close to my bedtime here. I only have three things, but I would like to say $850,000 to rehab that building is a lot of money. Mr. Walker and Ms. Gary will be familiar with this. Broad Street out past the housing project out there is a 45 mile per hour zone. People regularly go 65, 70 miles an hour out there. And I would just like to say, I think it's ridiculous that you zoned that little section of land across from the river as the, I don't think, T4 to be zone where you have a maximum 25-foot setback for a house to be built there. Seems absolutely ridiculous to be that close to traffic going that fast. Anyway, all I want to do is plant a seed so that if sometime in the future we can address that. I know you claim you don't want a spot zone, but you did it twice tonight, so I guess it kind of depends on the situation. Mayor Harmon has been very helpful under the current ordinance, providing me information and everything. But hopefully someday down the road, we can reopen that and do something with it. Second issue, traffic lights in New Auburn. Just spent a boatload of money down here in New Auburn. I know it wasn't entirely the city's money, but I get around most of the New England states because I drive a motor coach part-time now. And I have never seen traffic lights that are hung that high where if you come up to the stop line, you can't see the traffic light. Something should be done about that. I've heard other people complain about it, also the speed bumps down there. There's hardly ever anybody walking in New Auburn, and we've got those two huge speed bumps down there. And you can tell by the gouges in the road that people hit it with their cars and stuff. Really, that's about all I had to say. Paving. I do see that the city is finally getting out there and filling some potholes. I've complained about it a lot. I was told that they've put out 113 tons of hot top and everything. I don't know how accurate that is. But I never could understand why you would take a section of road that's got 100 potholes in it and fill those potholes individually instead of doing something about ripping up that pavement and everything. And I would like to offer, I know the union will not allow it, and the city probably won't either. I'm willing to work a couple of hours a week, I mean, a couple of hours a day, a couple of days a week to go around on my own time and fill some of those potholes if you provide me with the equipment. So anyway, that's all I have to say. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, other members of the public that would like to address the council?
So this wasn't planned, but it's almost a follow-up on some of the things he said.
Could you provide your name and address?
David Villadue, 72 High Street. I just spent $852 fixing my front end from hitting potholes. And as I'm leaving my Niki this weekend, the corner of Court and Spring Street doesn't have potholes. It has holes. Please, somebody's got to do something about it. I mean, I just had it fixed in my Niki, pulled out, and it's huge holes in there again. And trying to avoid them is going to cause an accident. So that's my two cents. It's something I've been wanting to talk to you about, but haven't been able to. But that, those aren't potholes. They're holes. It's dangerous.
Thank you. Other members of the public that would like to address the council?
It's me again. I just wanted to, Bruce Neto, 14 Truman Avenue. I just wanted to close by saying that I appreciate all the time and effort that you guys are doing, and lady. I guess from my perspective is, I'm trying, I'm hoping that we won't just stop here, that we will recognize the huge opportunity that the council has as representatives of the people. The people only have a few minutes to speak at a podium. They can send an email. You represent a community. Together, you can unite with Lewiston and other communities and bring the message to our state delegation, to our federal delegation. We're losing. We're losing on the homeless front. We know that. I wish there was someone here from those delegations tonight to see the people in person, and they weren't. It's disappointing. But you have the opportunity. I see huge talent. I know a number of you. You're very talented. You're solution-oriented. Get at them. Get at these people and make things happen. I appreciate what you did tonight. It was a step forward for the people that are suffering in this community, and I applaud you for that. But take a step back, recognize the opportunity you have as councilors, and go after the other people that are above us to get them involved on our team to solve these problems. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Other members of the public that would like to address the council on anything that's not on tonight's agenda? Seeing none, we'll close the open session. We'll move on to Item 8, Reports. For the mayor's report, Council Cowan, Council Whiting, and I attended the Auburn Public Library Annual Dinner. I think it was a great opportunity to interact with members of the board and members of the staff and learn more about the operations of the library. Council Whiting and I and the manager attended the grand opening of the new Northeast Bank Center at 836 Center Street. Very nice facility. I've seen them working on it. I hadn't been in. Very nice facility, very large turnout. Really happy to have them deciding to continue business in Auburn. And the last item is an update on 911 consolidation. As the council will remember, we have an informal committee. We've presented to the county commissioners. They've had three discussions. They have sent back, after their meeting last Wednesday, some questions about the financial models. There's a meeting of the informal committee later in the month. As soon as we get some sense of how the commissioners think they might want to proceed, we'll have a workshop and go into more detail about 911 consolidation. That's all I have. Reports from the councilors. Council Gary?
Nothing at this time.
Okay, Council Whiting, Council Cowan, Council Milk, Council Wyzner?
I'd like to wish everybody a happy Fourth of July and just remembering the sacrifices that the families of the founding fathers made that by signing that piece of paper, they committed treason and that started a chain of events that led us to the country we have today. So to always think about that. Thank you.
Council Walker?
Happy Fourth of July.
Council Platts?
Thank you. Two quick updates from last week's school committee meeting. First off, last meeting was the final meeting of Superintendent Dr. Brown as well as Mark Conrad, the business manager. So we wished them well on their retirements. And also, similar to the city council, the school committee has funds that expire coming up shortly. Those are called ESSER funds. Those are elementary and secondary school emergency, sorry, rescue funds. And in the last meeting, this was exciting news for the curriculum committee as well as the school board at large. They approved $463,000, $497,000 to purchase new science-related curriculum materials. And I'm only saying this because it's the first time they've been able to do this in 20 years, and you're supposed to recycle through your curricula every five. So it should obviously be happening more frequently, but with those ESSER funds, the school is able to recycle some of the science textbooks all the way up through the high school. So that's great news, and that's all I've got for this week.
Thank you, Mr. Manager.
Thank you, Mayor and council. I'll be quick. I know it's been a long evening. Just real quick, Sunday at 10:00 a.m., we will be holding the dedication of Philbrick Square. Norm Philbrick, this will be the 75th anniversary of his death in the line of duty as a police officer for Auburn. So we really encourage you to come out. This will be at the corner of Main, Court, and Great Falls Plaza. So that will now be renamed as Philbrick Square. Many of the family members of Officer Philbrick will be in attendance. Also, July is National Parks and Recreation Month. Tomorrow, we'll be pushing out a big list of family-friendly activities that are scheduled as part of this month's long celebration. So please enjoy Auburn's parks and connect with our recreation department as they help promote that. Also, I attended the Chamber Annual Awards Event. The city of Auburn nominated Panalum as the Change Leadership Award, which they received. It was great to see the representatives from Panalum there. They've been working with our Economic Development Director, Jay Brencheck. They have placed probably close to 30 new employees in their operation there. They're providing English as a Second Language classes at Panalum, and they've been, Panalum has been one of our largest participants with our WorkLinks Transit Program that partnered with Western Main Transportation to provide. So great work by Panalum, great representation for our community as well. We also wrapped up, at the end of June, we wrapped up the 2024 fiscal year on a high note for permitting. We surpassed our FY '23 numbers, second only to the FY '22 for the all-time record. We had over $61 million in permitting construction projects that had been submitted for FY '24. Our highest in the history of Auburn was, as I mentioned, in FY '22, which was 74 million. So a great year for permits here in Auburn, and we already are off to a great start for FY '25 with projects that are being lined up. I have been trying to give you regular updates on the 60-day dangerous building update for 46 Fair Street. They have demoed the front section of the structure as was recommended by the engineer, and they're making progress with the current renovations. We've had some challenges with the building remaining chronically unsecure, trash on site, and with some questionable unpermitted work. However, planning has been working with Mr. Sahid, the representative for the building. They have been making some progress with the trash and debris that's on site. And we're also connecting with the engineer. We believe we'll be able to ensure that those items that were not permitted will become permitted through the process. I encourage you to go by and take a look. It looks completely different, council, than when you first heard about this project. I think through the work of the permitting staff and the owner, I think a lot of great things has happened there. They'll give a more of a thorough update for you in the next few weeks, but I wanted to make sure you had that information. We will be closed July 4th and 5th here at Auburn Hall, just as a reminder. And I think that's, oh, we also have the, July 12th at 10:00 a.m., we have the PAL groundbreaking ceremony. So encourage people to come out and as we kick off the new PAL Center. Thank you.
Relative to the finance report, Ms. Earl was not available tonight. If there's any questions from the councilors, the city manager may be able to answer those or take them back. Any questions at all? Council Wyzner?
If I may, I'm sorry, it didn't get brought up at all, but there is the special election for the school board at-large seat that I believe is the 9th of July that didn't get mentioned. So I just wanted to make sure that did get mentioned. Please remember to turn out and vote.
And I believe, like the clerk can clarify this, it's unified voting here at City Hall, correct?
Correct. Consolidated for all wards will vote here at Auburn Hall and council chambers from 7:00 a.m. until 8:00 p.m. July 9th.
Great, thank you. Any questions? Council Gary?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Also, from what I understand, Wednesday is the last day you can call or come in to vote absentee or request a ballot, and you have till the end of the business.
absentee or request a ballot, and you have till the end of the business day, no extra hours, in order to get it done.
Yes, that's correct. Thank you.
Council Walker.
Sorry, but the last thing I want to say is, don't forget, Mills, Simon will be playing at the Festival Park Wednesday evening, and Age Friendly will be running a small concession stand.
Thank you. Any questions by the council about the finance report? There's no executive session tonight, is there? A motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
Moved by Council Wyzner, seconded by Council Walker. All in favor? Opposed? Seven having voted in the affirmative, none in the negative. The council will be adjourned.